Welcome to the Committee a whole meeting of the City Council, October 13th, 2021. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Council members Cosden.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Long.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Tate Preston.
Thank you. Item four is business, four A is citizens input. Citizens input time is a maximum of 60 minutes is set for input of citizens. While matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual, please remember to state your name. For the record, anyone wishing to speak during citizens input, please come forward. We're going to utilize the podium to the left.
Hi, my name is Joyce McDade, and I'm coming here regarding two things, the unlicensed contracting and the appointment of John Kelter-Gerone to the nuisance abatement board. I'd like you guys to reconsider his appointment to this board. There is currently a code compliance complaint against him for doing work as an unlicensed electrical contractor. He installed a hookup for my generator. The work was done incorrectly, and upon doing my hurricane preparedness, I found out that there was no shut-off switch installed. He used an RV outlet, and the cord was 30 amp with two male ends, which means that both of the ends would be hot. So I've had to hire a licensed contractor. He came in and did the work, and I have since had a permit pulled, and I have passed the inspection. John also in our community has had several incident reports against him, being from him being in backyards, taking pictures, harassment. There's even one report where it states that he was involved in several calls. He doesn't seem to have any ethics other than what is going to benefit himself, and I don't think he should represent the city in any capacity. Based on his work ethic, he should be the last person involved in trying to decide if someone else should receive a fine based on what he's done. And I just want to encourage you guys, if you have time, just to Google him and Google Free Melvin Ortiz, and you get a good idea of who you're dealing with. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Andrew Gray. I own Rackham Billiards on 47th Terrace. I'm here today to just put a little input on the food truck ordinance that I believe is being discussed today. Just a couple ideas on some things that have been, from the last meeting that I attended, that I wanted to touch base on, so you guys can take it into consideration when you do make the decisions on what's going forward. I've owned Rackham for 25 years. I've worked out of South Cape for 34 years in that same building, just to put that out there. During Streetscape, some of the things that went across ordinance last time that weren't discussed or were touched on, I'd just kind of like to reiterate. During Streetscape, they're allowing the food trucks to maybe do curbside parking. During Streetscape, there is no curbside, because of Streetscape, there is no curbside parking in South Cape, so at least in front of my building. So keep that in mind when you're saying who can and can't, because there's none on 47th Terrace, except in front of one place. So also, when you're doing this, you're building a downtown district. It's going to be, that's vital, that's growing pretty fast. A lot of places are coming in, and after 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, there's no food. There's very little food. There's slices of pizza. So I stay open until 2:00 in the morning, sometimes till 3:00, unfortunately. I'm not for that law, but I do participate in it. And there's no food. So other than slices of pizza, I think that food trucks fulfill that need for sure, 100%. They come in, they help out. Some of the ordinance is discussing restrictions that will severely inhibit my ability to do food trucks are the times that they can stay in the parking lots, the duration of that time on they can stay in the parking lots, both of which, I think if you really look down to it, I'm on Club Square directly. So really, the only parking after Streetscape, it literally left me, you can't get to my building, a building that was once any direction you could get to. Streetscape destroyed that for me. How? I don't know why, but they did. So anyhow, when you park, able to serve my building, there's a couple spots behind the building that I need to use. Me saying that I'm going to give up one of those spots, which is basically a loading zone to my building, should have no recourse with the city and their decisions on why I'm using that spot. So if I have a catering company come in, and they're catering to an event at my building, they should be allowed. And it shouldn't be allowed by one day. Say I have an event, like just this past weekend, I had two days, two-day event. 23 bands from all over the state came into Cape Coral, all right, that I brought. I had to feed them. There's really, if I have to have the truck leave in the middle of the night and come back, it's just not, it's very hard to do. So, and then I'd like you to keep in mind, my thought and my suggestion to that would be that you tell the trucks or the catering companies that they have, if they need to be able to show, if, that they can leave set up, they can't set up where it'll take them longer than 30 minutes to be able to leave if emergency vehicles needed entrance, or there's a reason why they had to get out of here. 30-minute duration, that should be the only limitation on time being set up anywhere in Cape Coral, whether it's personal or commercial. And then lastly, supplying, me supplying my utilities, electric or water, to a truck that's parked right next to my building, to help them save costs and make it effective, so that I can bring them in to feed the masses of people that bike nights and pub crawls and farmers markets and so many other things are coming down, I think it'd be things. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. I certainly appreciate the time that you're affording me. My name is Robert King. I also own a small business on 47th Terrace, but I'm here for a different, a different reason. A statistic that most of us know, and some of us may not know, is that we lose 22 veterans a day that take their lives by suicide. Being a Marine Corps veteran myself, I lost a family member to this, so it's very near and dear to my heart. So, once a year, on Veterans Day weekend, my wife and I, we own a hair salon on 47th Terrace. Maybe some of you have heard of it. It's called Somewhere on 47th Terrace. We're small, but we're very mighty. This year, Mr. Mayor, we spoke already, we hosted, we're our second annual 22-hour cut-a-thon. Why 22 hours? Because we, again, we lose 22 veterans a day to suicide. These men and women serve our country with the utmost pride and dignity that one could ask for. At the end of service, a lot of times, they're brushed aside and forgotten, and they get to these dark places where they think the only way out is to end their lives. I'm here to commit to grinding that number down to zero. Cape Coral is known as a Purple Heart City, so I'm here to ask your support. Mr. Mayor, you've already committed some of your time, and I'm extremely grateful. Your inspiration or your generosity has inspired others. As far as media personalities, I've sent out numerous emails to the Lee County Sheriff. He's joining us. My next stop is the fire chief and the police chief of the city, which I'm hopefully thinking they're going to support us. I've sent all the council members emails. Hopefully, if you haven't got them, I'm going to resend them. I had a glitch, so I'm going to resend them today, and I would love to invite all of you down. This is a community event. I'm not looking for any business recognition. I would rather do a community event where we together work and grind this number down to zero. 22 people a day, it's just, it's awful. If it's a, even if it's a civilian, these people need some help. So what, what we're going to do that day is my staff and I, we commit at 10:00 in the morning, we're going to start cutting hair. There's a $25 minimum donation. We cut hair until 8:00 on Saturday morning, so that means 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. Sorry, I'd like to talk to you if you're open that late. We need some late-night appointments. We do have food trucks, and I please ask you to, you know, the last two years have been, I'm not going to get sidetracked, but the last few years have been hell on all of us, and food trucks are a lot of, people are finding a way to come back. So we have commitment from four food trucks. One is going to pull 22 hours with us. There's an Army Ranger with a father that was a Green Beret, giving back 65% of his proceeds. Was that three minutes already? I'll wrap it up. We, it's a community event where we have two Gold Star families attending. We have a USS Cole survivor attending countless Afghan, recent Afghanistan returns. And I'll wrap it up by telling you where our proceeds go. We have far surpassed last year's goal already, and we still have four weeks left. We are sending our money local. We're going to do hopefully four or five scholarships to Idris Baker and their Fire Academy and their Nursing Academy. Most of the money will go to the Veterans Crisis Center over in Fort Myers, who deals directly with combat-returning veterans and those who have been subjected to sexual misconduct.
And the date of your events, sir?
It is November 12. It starts on Friday at 10:00 a.m. and it'll go to Saturday at 8:00 a.m. on the 13th. I'll get all the information. I have a press release. I can leave with, with somebody here. I have informational cards I can give you. And then the last, I have camera lady from Fox. Her nephew took his life at a young age, so we send a portion of his money. But most of the money, 90% of the money stays local. So as a community, I'd like to, to work together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in public input? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Any council discussion on public input? Council member Tate.
I just wanted to ask, Mr. King, I'm sorry, did you say the date is November 18th?
November 12.
12. Okay, and when, and what is the time? I'm sorry.
It starts at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, and goes to 8:00 a.m. on Saturday.
Okay, if you could resend the email. I know, I personally didn't get it, so, you know, I would appreciate that. Thank you. And I think that's it for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be attending that particular event. I think I'll be showing up in the morning to get the kickoff, get the event started. And then I believe about 6:00 p.m., I'll be in the dunk tank. So, anyone has a good right arm or a left arm and wants to come down and see me, I'll be there for a couple hours. Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to our discussion, item 4B. The first item in discussion is overview of the transit services in Cape Coral. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, members of City Council, ladies and gentlemen that are here today for today's committee of the whole meeting. So I'm going to ask Persis Zambrano from the Public Works Department to come up to the podium. She has the first two items on the agenda, and she'll introduce our guests in just a second. But this first item on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, is an overview of transit services provided by Lee County within the city of Cape Coral. As all of you have gone through the strategic planning process and heard input from our residents, both at several town hall sessions that we held, plus two community surveys, you know that our residents are becoming increasingly concerned about traffic and traffic congestion along some of our key corridors. We're only at 50% build-out, and we're expected to, our population to probably exceed well over 430,000 residents sometime in the future. And so we recognize that you can only build so many roads to handle the amount of vehicles that will be present on our street. So there was discussion and concern about traffic congestion, but also, we heard from our residents, there seems to be lack of general knowledge about what transit options are available to our residents here in Cape Coral. And I think that several months ago, several of you attended a session that we held down at the Yacht Club, where the topic was just transportation in general, not specifically on mobility or transit services. And so there was a lot of discussion, questions and answers that took place that day. And so we thought that it would be a good moment to have our friends from Lee County appear before you and just give a general overview of where things are in terms of mobility services within the city and what plans are on the horizon in terms of possibly extend, extending transportation options to our residents. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to Persis Zambrano, who will introduce our guests for this afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Persis Zambrano, Public Works Planning Manager. We have this afternoon the Lee Tran Director, Mr. Robert Cody. Also, he's with the Assistant County Manager, Mr. Mark Mora, and also relevant staff from Lee Tran. So with that, I pass the podium to Mr. Cody.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Robert Cody, Director of Lee Tran. It's a pleasure to be with you here this afternoon, and I thank your City Manager for inviting us here. Before I get into my presentation, I'll just hint on two points that Mr. Hernandez hit, and that's congestion mitigation, as well as current options here within Cape Coral city limits and what our future plans are. And what we talk about in transit is the way that we want our patrons and our citizens to view it. We want them to see the evolution of Lee Tran. It wasn't yesteryear's transit agency. It's what we can do for now and how we build for the future. It wouldn't be perfect if there wasn't a slight hiccup. But we want you to rethink. We want you to understand where we're revitalizing, and we are reinventing transit here locally. First, I'll start. What is Lee Tran? Who we are and what do we do? We provide fixed route services here in Cape Coral. Four primary routes. For Lee County as a whole, during our seasonal months, we provide 26 routes. Non-seasonal services include 23 routes. We provide paratransit services for those with disabilities, those who have reached an age where they qualify for certain criteria, as well as those who are in need. We also provide transportation disadvantaged services. Recently, we went out to Pine Island. We had a Route 160 that serviced north Cape Coral going into Pine Island that only ran once a week, which we now provide transportation disadvantaged services on Pine Island seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And that'll be starting November 21st. So to say where we were and where we're going here with Lee Transit, what do we do? In our best year pre-pandemic, we transported about 2.9 million passenger trips. Like many other transit state agencies throughout the nation, as well as the state, we've seen a decrease. And that's why we had to rethink what we needed to do in order to reach the general public. Our typical transportation, fixed route, big buses, were not doing the job. So we have a 10-year transportation development plan, which will be followed up in this presentation. But just to talk about what we do, we'll vital Oregon to transit within Lee County, because we never stopped our services, even at the height of the pandemic. Fun facts. In a good year, we would have 300 employees employed at Lee Tran, with the bulk of those, 70% of those employees being bus operators, that transported both fixed route, paratransit, and transportation disadvantaged. As I mentioned before, we have 26 routes at the height of our season. Here in Cape Coral, we transport about 179,000 passengers per year. Roughly, in this past year, that'll be about 10% of our passenger trips. We have 121 revenue vehicles, and we've started relationships not only with your city, city of Cape Coral, which Mrs. Zambrano will talk about after I present, but we also have partnerships with the city of Benita Springs, city of Fort Myers, and the CRA of Fort Myers. We have a mixed fleet of vehicles. We offer trams, fixed route buses, cutaways, vans, and trolleys. Now Cape Coral, the four routes that I mentioned, three of those routes connect to Fort Myers, which the most heavily traveled route is our Route 70. It goes from downtown Fort Myers to our Cape Coral Transfer Center on 47th Terrace. We also have our Route 120, which connects Edison Mall to our Cape Coral Transfer Center on 47th Terrace. And then we have our Route 30, which goes from the Bell Tower to the Transfer Center on 47th Terrace. So we have connected our routes to every bridge that connects Fort Myers into Cape Coral. So there's a connection there with the Route 120 connecting to the Route 110, providing an east-west corridor that'll take you from Cape Coral with one transfer to Lehigh Acres, which spans the width of our county. The Route 1, the Route 40 in Cape Coral is our circulator. That's our route that goes up and down Pine Island. It goes down Cape Coral Parkway. It goes down Country Club, as well as Del Prado. So our routes and our services hit the primary corridors here, from Santa Barbara to Pine Island to Del Prado, Cape Coral Parkway. Now with regards to the services that we, we render and the transit frequency, that's something that we're working on. And for the citizen out there who may be watching, if you look at that map, it'll show the bulk of the most densely populated areas in Cape Coral are covered by transit, with the exception of northwest Cape Coral, where I'm currently a resident. But as we get further into this presentation, you'll see our plans for the future. So we conducted a transportation development plan. It's a 10-year plan that lays out a map, it, as to where we are and where we need to be, and it breaks it down into segments, years one to three and years three to 10. And with that map, it shows different ways that we can increase travel within Lee County. And the primary goal with public transportation is accessibility, availability, frequency, and safety. So we, in our new TDP, we have a Cape Coral Express route, which is limited stops. That'll get you from our 47th Terrace Transfer Center to Fort Myers at the Forum. We plan for a superstop where there's a connection from the Forum to Cape Coral Transfer Center, and we'll have one going north to east from North Fort Myers and Merchant's Crossing over to the Forum, because we see that business is not just in downtown Fort Myers. It encompasses all of our county as a whole, and we want to connect and be the connector to all of that. That's in conjunction with the routes that I've already mentioned that touch base in Fort Myers. Now here's a map. Now this is exciting. This is the future when we talk about our transportation development plan. And Mr. Hernandez mentioned what the community is asking for and how transit can be a part of that. In the green, you will see a mobility on demand. We're starting our pilot mobility on demand called the Ultra. Benita Springs is the first municipality that will experience the mobility on demand feature. It will be a part of the Uber app. So it almost looks like a party bus, and that was intentional, so that it's inviting in a different type of capacity. It's solely based on the rap. And we want to have choice riders, not those who are transit-dependent. And it's been well-accepted and well-received, and it's not a new mode of transportation, because it's used nationwide in most metropolitan areas. And with this mobility on demand, if you pull up the Uber app, it'll show you all of the Uber rides that are available, and then it'll show public transportation. The difference being is the cost. At $1.50, we create service areas. So if you look at the purple and/or the green, you will see you can travel within that geozone for $1.50 from point A to point B, and potentially a return trip. And it's an on-demand service, meaning you call, and based on availability, you'll have a time slot, which your pickup and drop-off time will be. I also have the orange line, which I spoke to previously, as well as the red, which are the express routes from Cape Coral and North Fort Myers over to the Forum. The blue, that's our Lee Collier. So we're not just thinking Lee County. The Forum will connect people coming from Cape Coral to Fort Myers to Collier County, and vice versa. So it's a collaboration, and we meet quarterly with Collier County to align our goals. This is just a little more context to the map. In the event that I spoke a little quickly, it just provides more of a breakdown of what our mobility zones are, where they go, and what our midterm and long-term goals are. Now this map, it details Lee Tran's short and long-term goals. It shows our mobility zones throughout Lee County. And if you'll see Cape Coral, what's proposed for Cape Coral based on the growth, the demographical needs, you'll see two mobility zones, on-demand zones, unlike any other area. Every other community or region has one mobility zone, whereas in Cape Coral, being that this is our largest city, has two, and based on the current growth index. And we have this outlined as a 10-year plan, but it's not just a 10-year plan. It's based on community needs, stakeholder needs, and collaboration between our municipalities. It's really, public transportation doesn't generate a profit, generates a revenue. So it requires partnerships in order to implement new and innovative changes at a faster rate. I looked up a couple of your policies prior to arriving, and we wanted to make sure that Lee Transit was in alignment with what your city is striving for and what it's looking for with regards to public transportation. And the goal of it is to reach all of our stakeholders, our citizens within Lee County, to ensure that they have a safe place, shelters, and that we promote transit in a positive light, a transparent light, and a truthful light. And in order to make those things work, it's really predicated on partnerships. And Mr. Hernandez is actually invited us here, and he had great ideas and expectations of what he envisions and what he sees for transit. And the more collaboration Lee County Transit has with the city of Cape Coral, the more exposure you'll get with regards to the services to which we render. And this map here, in conclusion with questions, it shows to the bottom right what our system looks like, and to the top left, it shows the network that's in Cape Coral. And what you'll see is there's a lot of services that are rendered here in Cape Coral. We just have to do a better job with my team and myself in collaboration with the city of Cape Coral to promote our services more and to let the of Cape Coral to promote our services more and to let the citizens of Cape Coral and Lee County as a whole know what we have to offer, being your transit agency of choice. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Cosd.
Thank you, Mayor. I am so excited about the Ultra concept, and I don't think, you said, when might it come to Cape Coral? I know it's starting in Benita Pilot, right?
Yes. The pilot starts in Benita in January. We're looking at Cape Coral 2024, but there's always room to advance a project based on collaboration.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I really liked the, the new service that you're offering as well. Is there an app or anything that people can download so they know information and, and schedule times and paths and things like that?
Absolutely, sir. It'll be on the Uber platform. So as long as you have the Uber app, once our services start, it will be at the bottom of the screen because they have to promote their products first. But you will see transit as being the option, and our product price is just one price and a flat rate.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you. I'm also happy to see this Cape Coral Express out to the Forum because as we all know, if you've ever tried to drive out to Lehigh, it's, it's pretty impossible during the hot times of the day. And we actually have an employee that has to leave at a certain time of the day so you can get the bus to get him back out there. So knowing that it's going to be an hourly express without stops, I don't have to worry about getting him to the mall, the Coralwood Mall, or the Cape Coral Mall, or over to Bell Tower because he's got to catch a different bus before he can get home. So it's exciting to see that change as well.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to again express my excitement for the Ultra system. I think that's great. Obviously, it's important to, every once in a while, reinvent. So I commend Lee Tran for their, their willingness and, and the effort that they're putting forth to kind of adapt to what is a shifting environment and such an essential service as transportation.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, just one more thing. Mr. City Manager, is there a way that our city can market this to our citizens as well to educate them with maybe on the move and websites and things like that to educate them?
Absolutely. And I think Robert mentioned in his comments that he and I have been in contact, and during that conversation, you know, we talked about, you know, he was telling us all the great things that Lee Tran does in the Cape, and I was astonished to hear all this. And, and I said, hey, listen, we need to really work together to get the word out to our residents because our residents are not getting the word, right? Clearly, when we had that transportation session on, at the yacht club that many of you attended, you know, folks just don't know what services are available to them. And so we'll work with our communications staff to update our, our website and work very closely with Robert and our friends in Lee County to make sure that our residents are able to get up-to-the-minute, you know, developments and, and news from, from Lee Tran.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson. Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, especially with this new system, which is very exciting. Do y'all ever do or encourage any type of environmental days with Lee Transit? Like, I know when I first moved here back in 2008, I want to say y'all did, you know, where you would say like bike to work and, and take, take a bus and bike here, you know, like you can clip your bike on and, do y'all do that anymore?
Yes, we actually have Try Transit Day. And it generally happens in April, and that's when, I want to look at Mr. Moore, our Assistant County Manager, we ask county administration for a free day for all of our citizens here in Lee County to actually try transit. And it's a nationwide trend, and it generally happens in the beginning of April. And then we have components of features where we try to get people out of cars during our Mobility Week. And I believe our Mobility Week this year is the week of November 5th.
Okay, great. I would love it, Mr. City Manager, if we could kind of cross-market that with, especially with this new system coming to Cape Coral. I think it would just get people prepared and maybe create some excitement. I'll do it. I'll be your, I'll do it.
I'll join you on that route.
Yay, we'll take, we'll take selfies. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think that we have to make sure, because I'm, I'm probably with the city manager, I probably didn't realize how much you are here in our city. And I think that definitely room for growth. So that partnership between your department and our city, I think is very important. And it's also just as important to make sure, I think this is definitely a, a good project for our new communications department, to get that message out there, let them know what's available now and what's to come. So I appreciate you, your staff, for coming here today and, and sharing, sharing your vision. And hopefully, here at the city, we can partner with, with you to make that vision a reality. So thank you.
Thank you for having me.
All right.
So the next stop is, Mr. Mayor, with this flow, and then the next stop is, again, it is transit-related and deals with amenities that are located at bus stops or supposed to be located at bus stops. As we have found that a few years, we have bus benches and advertising that go along with those bus benches, both at official bus stops and unofficial bus stops. Or basically, I don't want to call them unofficial bus stops because they're not bus stops at all. So these bus benches just appear throughout the city, and they're not necessarily connected to a formal bus stop. And so we've been operating for quite some time without a formal agreement with a firm to manage those bus benches. And in our conversations with Lee Tran and Persis, we'll, we'll give you a little bit more background information on that in just a second, we felt that it was more appropriate for Lee Tran to be the primary driver behind amenities at their bus stops and managing advertising that may go along with those bus stops. And as you know, Lee Tran receives federal funding, so their bus stops have to meet stringent requirements, both in terms of accessibility, construction standards, and so forth. And our process or method up until now to essentially allow a company to randomly place these bus benches throughout the city, well, our standards don't necessarily meet federal guidelines for official bus stops. And for that reason, we think that a partnership between Lee County Transit and the City of Cape Coral is really the direction we need to go in. And so I'm going to turn it over to Persis Sembrano, and she'll fill you in with, with a bit more information. Persis?
Thank you. So continuing with the transit-related subject, so we're going to talk about the benches and shelters that support transit. As part of your package, you have a more detailed timeline of events. I have with me Wanda Rupa, our procurement manager. She has been along with me on this ride, no pun intended. So everything started in 1993, when the city entered into an agreement with the Cape Coral Volunteer Firemen's Benevolent Association and Metropolitan System to install benches, at transit stops, and other convenient locations within the Cape. So this was a 10-year contract that auto-renewed if we didn't meet either party. We'll have to meet certain deadlines in order to stop the contract. So we put a timer on stopping the contract because Lee Tran and Mr. Corrigan's predecessor brought to the city's attention that the contract had a clause that, in which they have the right of first refusal for advertisement to provide shelters also in the city, even though they didn't provide shelters. So, and there also were some outdated wording in the contract. So we, we came before council, and in 2014, we sent a letter to cancel the, the contract. So actually, the letter went out in 2013, and then in 2014, the contract officially expired. So you know, the advertisement is what is really keeping the maintenance of the facility that is supporting transit. It's not really that, like they're using, in the case of Lee Tran, advertisement to make a new revenue source for the service. It's just to keep the maintenance of the bench or the shelter. So what we did in 2014, 2015, we started working with Metropolitan, the provider at the time, on a new agreement, updated wording, and also to allow Lee Tran to provide the shelters, and they will get outside of the shelter business. When we were going through that, the entry structures came to the Cape. I don't know if you remember that partnership in which the, the city will allow advertisement in the right-of-way based on the agreement with Lamar for those entry structures. So the city manager, we, we put on hold negotiations because we didn't know where that was going to go, and there were, at the time, there were some conversations to remove advertisement for, from the right-of-way. So after the entry structure, contract with, agreement was approved, we continue looking at what options do we have? Because by then it's 2016, transit is getting more funding from the federal, federal highway. So we started looking what will be the best path forward for the city. So in 2018, the city manager decided to give a staff direction to issue an RFP to see what is out there, how is the market will react for, to service benches and shelter for the city. So we got three proposals, but unfortunately, one was too good to be true, which came out to be true. So in 2019, we have to rescind all the proposals because they couldn't meet, and basically the, the, the three vendors were expecting the city to put the funding to provide for the concrete paths and everything that will be required in order to meet ADA. So that will be a heavy investment on the side of the city, and that wasn't really the plan. In 2019, the meantime, the vendor, the original vendor, Metropolitan, sold the company to creative outdoor advertisement. So this new company approached us and provided an unsolicited offer to service the city. In 2020, current city manager, Mr. Hernandez, asked us, will Lee Tran be interested in servicing benches and shelters for the city? So we approached Lee Tran, and they expressed that yes, they will be interested into that. So in 2021, so beginning this year, we told the current vendor, Creative Outdoors, that we were in communications with, you know, full disclosure, that we were in communication with Lee Tran in providing the service, and we were expecting a, a response. So in last month, they sent us a letter, a legal letter stating that the city cannot enter into an agreement with the county for this service, and that was their legal opinion. And the, they were requesting at the same time, because they haven't been with our contract, they have kept their benches on location, status quo, they keep doing the maintenance, you see the advertising in, in those benches with our contract all this time. So they were asking either a short-term agreement on a month-to-month basis or a, a six-month agreement until we make a final decision. So to give you a, an idea, what is the revenue we get from their, their advertisement is about $5,000 a year, what the check that they send to the city on an, I think they, they submit quarterly checks, and at the end, this is what we're talking about in terms of revenue we get from that vendor based on their advertisement. So I want you to know that Florida statutes, they govern bus benches, and they have a provision in which the jurisdiction, we don't have to go for an RFP. We can select the person we have to, we want to service the benches associated with transit. The land development code requires council approval to enter into, to allow benches and shelters with advertisement in the right-of-way. So whatever we do, we'll, we'll have to come before you for approval. As I mentioned, the benches that are out there remain a status quo. The city attorney's office had, in response to that letter from the current vendor, determined that the city is in good standing to request that vendor to remove the benches, and we can start negotiation and enter into an agreement with Lee Tran to provide that service. So path forward, what with, if there is the consensus of council, what the city manager is proposing is to communicate to the current vendor the need to remove their benches. And of course, we want this to be a smooth transition between the two agencies. And then we will have to coordinate with Lee Tran their timing, how they take over the, the service. There are potential issues. They might be the case in which the current vendor say, okay, I'm taking my benches today, and then we will have a gap of service until Lee Tran can provide their facilities. There is the potential for a legal challenge. We already heard from their legal counsel. And the communication strategy is going to be key to keep our residents informed of what's going on, and we will, the, the goal is to have a smooth transition. So I want to show you, so the existing benches, you are very familiar with them. They're all, all over the city. I think there are about 150-something benches. And Lee Tran, here you have a sample of Lee Tran's benches. They're similar, how they look, the difference is the ADA part. Oh, as Mr. Hernandez mentioned, they get federal funding, they have to meet federal requirements. Samples of shelters, Lee Tran shelters, I'm particularly excited to the one to the left, to the right, I'm sorry. And also you see they have these solar power shelters that you can see in other cities, in other areas in Lee County. So with that, if you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got a few questions before I turn it over to council. You mentioned we have 150 benches in our city. Do you know how many shelters we have?
I think it's about four.
Four shelters?
Yeah, not that many.
And could you go back to the revenue slide that you presented?
He's correcting me. We have 12 shelters because he manages the shelters. The current vendors, they don't do shelters.
Okay. So we have 12 shelters, approximately 150 benches throughout the city. And the contract that you had mentioned, I guess we entered into an agreement in 1993. And could you tell me, it looked like there may have been at least one extension, possibly two in that contract?
Yes.
Can you tell us when that contractor actually ended? What year?
The 1993, 94.
93, 94. I thought that's when the contract began.
I'm sorry, I apologize, yes. Let me, I have the letter here, and I can tell you. We sent the letter in 2013.
2013? So from 2013 to now, which is, you know, approximately eight years, they basically had these locations throughout the city with no contractual agreement with the city at all.
That is correct.
And also my understanding, at looking at the information, this company has actually changed hands at least once.
Correct.
During this process as well. And I would assume that at no time since 2013, until most recently, we haven't had any correspondence at all with that particular?
We have, we have been in contact, communication with the vendor, the, the previous and the current.
Okay. And even though we haven't had any type of contractual agreement, it still appears that we've been getting some revenues each year, probably just going off the, the last contract that we had?
Correct.
Okay. And I know, Madam City Attorney, you said you have reviewed that particular contract, and it appears that, in your opinion, we could move forward in a different direction. Within that contract, was there any timeline that we had to provide them with a certain amount of notice? I know that would have been probably, if we were under contract with them. Do you feel that we need to provide them with any notice moving forward since we're out of contract?
We would have to look at the notice issue. What we reviewed was not the contract recently, it was the statute, because they have an attorney who's maintaining that we cannot engage in this kind of a relationship with Lee Tran. We told them we disagree with their interpretation, and if they have any more specific information they would like to provide to us, then we would be happy to receive it.
Okay. Another question that I have for Lee Tran. Another question that I have for LiTran, if you can maybe answer just a couple of questions. If we decide to move forward, my question is, is basically a timeline, is if we decide to move forward, could you maybe let us know what type of timeline that you would need to implement a plan of this nature? Also, we have 150 benches and 12 shelters throughout the city, what would be your expectation in beginning this process and this partnership with the city about how many benches and how many shelters throughout the city to start with?
So those preliminary conversations have already started with regards to internally what we would do, and we would start off, we're utilizing a phased approach, taking over 50 benches, and with those benches, because of the staffing and the time that we have, should your current vendor remove their benches, and we have to reinstall and ensure that they're ADA-compatible and accessible. 50 benches would generally take us about six weeks in a good year, depending upon how we can get resources, and plywood at some points in time go up and down with regards to demand, so it generally would take us between six to 12 weeks to get it on the ground. But we also, and that's truly dependent upon if they are ADA-accessible, because that is the first and foremost thing that we have to make sure, is that stop is safe. Some of your benches currently are on the easements of people's property, and they're placed, not stops, but the benches, in random places, whereas, and we have to be strategic in our approach because we are federally and state-funded.
And how about the 12 shelters that we have throughout the city?
We maintain those.
Now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, and Mercedes, Mrs. Zambrano showed the picture that had our new shelter, and that new shelter is a metal structure, and those shelters cost about $16,000 per. So when we put this down, we're making a huge investment, not only into the city, but for our patrons and stakeholders alike.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
And my last question, I guess, would go back to staff, those particular shelters that were put up, I'm assuming by the other vendor, but they're maintained by LiTran?
No, no. The other vendor, they never got into the shelter business, they only provided benches.
And who?
All the shelters were provided by LiTran, or were called development contributions, and then LiTran took over maintenance.
Okay, so the only possibility that we have is losing the 150 benches?
Correct.
In the city now, because they're owned by the other vendor.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have at this time. Councilmember Hayden.
See, every time you go first.
I try to get all your answers.
Well, yeah, you do a pretty good job of it. All right, so there's, I guess for LiTran, so we're gonna evaluate just the 50 for benches, and see if they're ADA-compliant, the other 100 won't be part of the service anymore, I'm a little confused on the 150, the 150 to the 50 number.
So, also, if we go through LiTran, management of the benches and shelters, they follow certain policies based on ridership and based on other factors. The current vendor, he wants to service the transit stops, but those were, he has the better visibility. So, that's why you might see a bench today on a bus stop that maybe the ridership is not high, and perhaps LiTran doesn't see the need to put a bench in that location, they want to optimize their resources.
So during our evaluation process, we know the benches that are more popular than others, and will be able to place the benches accordingly?
Correct, there's two factors. From a vendor standpoint, you place benches on all the visible roads, Santa Barbara, Del Prado, so it generates a revenue or profit. With regards to a transit perspective, we place them based on ridership, and where that ridership is, so you may have 151 current benches, but there only may be a need for 70, based on the demand and the ridership and the population in the general area, we're not in it for revenue, we're in it for our people.
And speaking of which, with revenue that's collected, I'm sure a different system will be used on how we've collected money in the past, will all the revenue go to LiTran? Will some of the revenue go to the Cape? Is that still something that's being negotiated? How will it work on the revenue side of things?
Councilmember, I knew that was coming. Generally, all those, that revenue would come to LiTran because of the investment that we would make just to put down a pad, a shelter, and make it ADA-accessible, it could cost us about $60,000 per stop.
Okay.
So we wouldn't see a revenue for years to come.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tate.
I personally am in support of moving away from the other vendor and actually getting ADA-compliant and decent benches that our ridership ability would be able to use, because these benches have been scattered around the city for years, they're not maintained, they're not very sightly. So, I would support having LiTran really take a look at that and make sure that they are where the ridership is. And I do like their little, whatever we, what do we call that? So, Jaden, no, go back to that. I really like the new one, I think it's really attractive, I've seen people using that. I don't see a bench just sitting out in the middle of Cape Coral Parkway where nobody comes and goes, and maybe somebody sits there, but there are so many that I've seen that we don't use. So I would appreciate a system where they really look at the routes and see where the benefit is for those and the ADA-compliant, because a lot of people that need that service ride the buses. So, I would like to go to that, I don't want to get any legal challenge, I really don't, but I know a couple of people that have those benches, and I don't think they've ever paid in the last few years. So I think that's a pretty loose contract, but I don't like those, so I'd be happy to remove those.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I like switching to the new vendor. The old vendor, a lot of the benches are gonna confuse people, because a lot of them benches, like we said, are in places where the buses don't even stop, so it just creates confusion. But at the same time, is that, the vendor that we would be getting rid of, is that a local business?
I believe they're from Tampa, the original was from Tampa, and this one, I believe, relocated to Tampa.
Okay. Because I was gonna say, you know, if they have to remove 150 benches, we can use benches at some of our parks. I don't know if they would comply, or they would have to do some alterations, but I myself, I go to Trafaga Park to take my son to soccer, and literally 1,000 people show up, and there's nowhere to sit unless you bring your own chair. So, I don't have a problem, I don't know about the other council people, but to have some benches around our parks and along the walkways, paths, maybe adjacent to fields, I have no problem with a company paying for our benches and having some advertisement on them that they can share. We can use that income to help maintain our parks and give people a place to sit. You know, I know it's customary for a lot of people, when they go with their children to a sport, they bring the folding chairs, but there are times when I might leave a city meeting and have to race to a sports field to watch one of my children, and I don't always have a chair. And we can use some benches at parks, so this might be an idea, instead of battling with this organization, maybe we can find them another use in our city, and not just throw away that income, maybe we can do a new contract and revitalize the income that we make from them 150 benches, and maybe get that company to improve them. And I don't want to see the, you know, the income go away, be nice to continue that income, continue the relationship, and add another benefit to our city if possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh.
I like the idea of having LiTran find the correct spot for the benches. I think what they're gonna do is good, it's gonna clean up a lot of the unused benches. The only thing that concerns me is the timeframe, like was in the presentation, also, people might have already paid for a certain amount of advertising, and I don't want to take that away from a, you know, a business that's looking forward to that. So, if there is a timeframe where we talk with the old vendor and let them know this is gonna happen in five months or three months, to give them that month-to-month contract, I'd be okay with, barring that they know that they've got that much time to collect all their money, fulfill their contracts, and then remove the benches. So, if it's a three-month, four-month, or even six months, I would be okay with that, instead of just telling them tomorrow, hey, you're out, come get your benches. So I'd rather us work with the old company in transitioning to the new one.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just want to respond to the idea that Councilmember Shepherd brought up, and I think it's an interesting idea, and certainly one that we're going to follow up on. However, I don't want to give council an impression that we're gonna work with the existing company to see if they would be willing to relocate to our parks. I think this is, that's a different issue here, we don't have a contractual relationship with the existing company, and I think the laws are a little different, I think you have flexibility to allow a company to set up these amenities in the right-of-way, I don't think you have that, but I'll have to check with the city attorney's office, I don't think you have that necessarily with the parks, so I think we may have to go through some sort of a competitive process to select a company that would be interested in providing that amenity in our park system. So, just pointing that out, that it's, we can look at the idea, I think the idea is good, but we're not necessarily married
I understand.
...to the existing vendor.
Yeah, I agree, I think, you know, if we're gonna go down a path and have a partnership with LiTran, there's probably gonna be many prongs along the way in that partnership, and I see this as just being one of them. So, I would support entering into an agreement with LiTran moving forward, try to make that transition period as easy as possible. You know, they've already said 50 benches is probably at least 12 weeks, whenever we have that agreement with LiTran, then I think then, you know, that's about a three-month process, about 90 days, then I think that would be a good point in time to send a notice to the other vendor, you know, 90-day notice on when that transition will happen. Hopefully that'll accommodate and address some of Councilmember Welsh's concerns, but I will definitely support utilizing LiTran in this initiative. Councilmember Tate.
Thank you, that was exactly what I was gonna say, Mr. City Manager, I think that we move off of one company, we should completely end that relationship. Would you develop a timeline for us, for this, or we're gonna have to vote on it, I'm assuming, and see what the actual timeline's gonna be for the old benches to move out, the new ones to come in, and take into consideration the construction, et cetera?
Sure, we will work on the timeline and transition plan with Lee County, and then we will provide that when the inter-local agreement between us and the county comes before you for votes, you'll have that spark.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions from staff? And Mr. City Manager, you get the direction you're looking for?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All righty. Thank you, LiTran, and the other members of Lee County Government, thank you for coming today. We'll move on to the next topic of discussion, which is enforcement of unlicensed contractors. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, this is a follow-up item to a discussion that took place recently, I want to say maybe a month to two months ago, where we had some citizen input regarding the city's efforts to curtail unlicensed contractor activity. And as a result of the gentleman approaching the podium, I think that there was some unfair media coverage that made it seem like the city does not take unlicensed contracting seriously. And so we felt it necessary to come back before you, there were some scheduling issues that prevented us from coming back to you sooner, but we wanted to get this on your workshop agenda to let you and the public know exactly what it is that the city of Cape Coral does to curtail illegal contracting activity. And so, I want to ask Mr. Rich Carr, our Code Enforcement Manager, to come to the podium and lead you through a discussion on our initiatives to really crack down on unlicensed contracting in the city. So, Mr. Carr?
Good afternoon, Councilor Mayor, Rich Carr, for the record, from the Code Enforcement Division. Today I have a short presentation with quite a bit of information, it's a very complicated topic, but I'm happy to get into it as deeply as you'd like, but I'll try to follow my PowerPoint just to keep me rolling forward. The topic itself is unlicensed and licensed activity, much of the enforcement that we do is not solely related to unlicensed contractors, but also licensed contractors as well. One of the elements associated with unlicensed contracting that we do see some of is the advertising, and nowadays, advertising is done in many different ways, everybody gets the coupon books, we see it in the newspaper, which is somewhat antiquated at this point, Facebook, Nextdoor, some of the social media apps are very popular, and free platforms for anyone to advertise in various, for various things, including licensed and unlicensed activity. One of the issues with regard to enforcement of that, there is an element of the statute that talks about it's illegal to advertise if you are an unlicensed contractor for services that you are unable to provide legally. One of the things that we have to determine, once we find the activity on the Facebook app, or the paper, wherever it may be printed or disseminated, is jurisdiction. In other words, there has to be a nexus to our city for us to do any enforcement action. It doesn't mean that we can't refer it to the state, we do that routinely, however, our enforcement activity has to be limited to our jurisdiction within the city of Cape Coral. So that's a difficult thing to accomplish simply by reading the ad. They don't really specifically address that they're in Cape Coral, where they reside, where they have an office, or what the case may be, or even the activity that they're performing. So that's a big part of what we have to overcome when we see these types of things. So the simple illegal advertising potentially is not always enforceable by our office, or the city of Cape Coral for any staff member. Workers' comp is another element of unlicensed activity. Obviously, if they're an unlicensed contractor, they're probably not carrying workers' comp for themselves, or their staff members, if they have other people working with them. This is an area of enforcement that's done by the state, it's a separate entity within the state, it actually takes a couple of different divisions to do the enforcement, they have an enforcement arm and an administrative arm. So it's a very difficult, comprehensive way to do enforcement that we don't do, but we get involved and we refer things out to these folks in the state. Permits is a big thing, obviously, if someone is unlicensed, they have the inability to pull a permit. So, you know, unlicensed contractors aren't pulling permits, it's a very easy thing to notice as a homeowner, if you don't have a permit at your property for the work being done, then you probably are dealing with an unlicensed contractor, or someone taking shortcuts that you want to do more stringent review of. Outside license scope, what that means is basically, not every specialty contractor or every contractor has the ability to do all types of work. So you have to make sure that the contractor that's doing the work is doing it within the scope of their license and what they're qualified to do by the state. It's another element of the unlicensed activity that can occur. Door-to-door soliciting of work, you know, we've all seen it, I've seen it in my neighborhood, I know the industry associated with landscape maintenance is a big one, there's always somebody trying to trim my palm trees, you may have all had that occurrence as well, coming door-to-door, they're typically unlicensed people, they may have business cards, I scrutinize them now more than I used to before I became the code manager, and I find that they are typically unlicensed as well. So, it's just another area that we deal with routinely, and that occurs around the city. Side jobs, many of the employees of the licensed contractors get the skills to do the work that they're doing licensed under their boss, they now suddenly go out, because there's so much work, and they do side jobs, they're unlicensed themselves, however possibly qualified to do the work, have the capability to do the work, but they're not licensed under the state, so therefore, they can take the work away from their bosses sometimes because they're gonna do it much cheaper. I've got a number here of 32 investigations, complaints, and this is for fiscal year 20 and 21 together, I only throw it out there as a number, everybody wants statistics, this encompasses our staff that staff that are dedicated to the construction enforcement element of code. It's not strictly unlicensed activity. They do everything. Um, they'll get involved with expired permits, which is rampant. We have expired permits every day. We get a report every week that we try to vet and look at. We deal with the older stuff first. It's a constant element of their job as well. So it takes, and again, it's just only to show the volume that does take away their ability to focus solely on unlicensed work. Um, they deal with only, uh, licensed elements associated with contractors that licenses expire, you know, various other issues associated with it, not just the unlicensed element. They do site checks. When they're doing their site checks, they're gonna run into other code violations, so it takes time away from other activities associated with unlicensed contractor investigative work. Uh, I only bring that up because, you know, that's not the only function that these staff perform. Now, all code officers are capable, but not all trained properly and focused on it. They have other responsibilities. As you know, there are a lot of codes that we enforce in the city. However, the unlicensed contractor in licensed activity that we do monitor is done every day. We have two staff members full-time. That's what they do. But it's not just one focused element associated with unlicensed work. These are the areas of competency that the state certifies, uh, contractors for. Um, and again, there's multiple, uh, areas of professional, um, capability, and this is what the enforcement has done at the state level through DBPR. In the city, we do certify, uh, specialty contractors in certain things like painting and, um, tile work, uh, paver activity and so forth. But the state is what typically the unlicensed contractor investigations are focusing on primarily. Enforcement, enforcement is done under Florida statute, primarily Chapter four eighty-nine. It's a very large statute. It encompasses the licensing elements and also the enforcement side of construction industry. Um, one of the things that we use is, as the state, we took it from the state basically, is a cease and desist letter. When we do find a violation of illegal advertising for unlicensed activity, we'll send them a cease and desist letter first. It's a simple way for us to draw attention to their activity and the fact that we have taken notice of it and hopefully stop them from continuing to at least advertise publicly for their services. Written warnings, county citations, they're, they're used on the same, uh, in the same way. Obviously, the warnings is, is, does not carry a penalty, uh, but it does get their attention. Is our hope, you know, obviously, we're trying to curb the behavior, not necessarily generate fines or recovery of, uh, fi- funds for the city, but it is an element that we can and do use, uh, here in our office. Sweeps is another element of enforcement. We did a sweep, uh, last Friday. We've, we don't do these often. Uh, it's a very coordinated effort. We, uh, last week we did it with DBPR, workers' comp, uh, in the code division, as well as a, uh, the financial services division of the state. Um, actually, DBPR, they had to bring people in from Tampa. Their, their, you know, their staff numbers are short and low, low as well, uh, in some re- some regard, but they did bring in people to help. Had about twenty people out there. We, we hit, uh, twenty sites. We found no state unlicensed activity. Uh, we did find two specialty contractors that were not properly licensed here in our jurisdiction that we, we dealt with. Again, we did find other code violations that we didn't ignore while we were there, such as, um, uh, water runoff and, and erosion control, which is an issue for us routinely. Um, the workers' comp, uh, staff member, ironically, we, we hit a couple of the large apartment complex construction sites, and they wanted to go there. Uh, one of their investigators got stuck at one place all day. So the, the level of investigative work that's required for some of these cases is significant. So you go to one place, you find some violations. It's gonna take them all day to really follow through. So it's difficult to get the, the numbers, to really get a good feel for where we're at. But of the twenty sites we did hit, uh, during the six-hour, uh, sweep, um, we, we didn't find any state-level, um, unlicensed contractors. Now, that doesn't say they're not out there. It just happened to be the twenty that we checked that we didn't see it. Uh, and we did it, you know, a couple of different ways. Some of them, we, we selected certain types of permits. We tried to go after some owner-builder permits. That's typically an area that they can violate a little bit more easily, uh, in function in that area. But we, uh, we also did some neighborhood or area-specific enforcement where there's so much going on in our city, you go into a neighborhood, you just go down one street to the next, and you're gonna hit a construction site. So we did a lot of that as well. We were well-received at the construction sites. Um, just so you know, we don't typically get any pushback from licensed contractors. Uh, they're primarily happy to see us. They understand our function and why we're there. Uh, we, we get cooperation pretty regularly. We do have times where it's a, it's a breakdown. Some of the contractors, we have some difficulty communicating with for various reasons, language-based primarily. Um, but we are able to work through that, some, with some of our staff that are, uh, capable of speaking other languages. Uh, undercover stings has been talked about a lot. Uh, law enforcement is needed for these operations. They're highly, uh, involved. Um, we've done them. Since I've been here six years, uh, we've done one that I can remember. Uh, didn't have a lot of success. Um, you have to have a good spot. You have to have a, a, a place to perform the undercover activity. You need law enforcement support, uh, surveillance equipment. Um, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult thing to undertake. It's a great tool. It's not the end-all, be-all, but it is a deterrent. Um, and again, it's, there are misdemeanors and felonies associated with these violations. So what that means, you can make an arrest, uh, on-site based on your probable cause, or you can do warrant requests and arrest them later. Uh, ironically, there's really not a, you know, people aren't going to jail these days for nonviolent offenses, just because of the COVID, uh, stuff that's going on in the jail. So the deterrent is there, however, it's not immediate like it used to be in the past with regard to arrest. It's something that we want to do more of. I've coordinated, I've talked with the, the chief of police here in the Cape, uh, the former police chief. We did get cooperation and conducted one with him. Uh, we're gonna be able to do them again now, but again, it comes down to staffing and capability and availability of people to put this stuff together. It is something we have on the radar, though. It's a coordinated and comprehensive, comprehensive effort to enforcement. Some jurisdictions, uh, Sarasota's kind of the model. They, they're kind of well-known with regard to, um, complete cooperation between the state attorney's office, sheriff's office, local police, code enforcement, state agencies, and it takes all of them to really do this right, so to speak. Um, there's a lot involved, a lot of moving parts. Um, so it takes, um, the desire and, and the need. So if it's what the community needs with regard to moving forward, it becomes a more focused effort for all agencies that are necessary to do proper enforcement to truly deter and impact this issue. The issue does come and go. Um, many times with regard to, um, uh, natural disasters, you get an influx of contractors coming from elsewhere. There are some provisions in the statute that allow for that. However, they need to be licensed where they come from. But we do see an uptick with regard to unlicensed activity during those times, and times like now where there's so much work that there's an abundance of people that are looking for things to be done at their homes, and they can't always get a licensed contractor quickly, and the prices have gone up. So it, it's just the nature of the beast, I believe, is why there's somewhat of an uptick, or at least a perceived uptick, of activity. We have increased construction. There's gonna be increased illegal activity associated with it. Again, like I said, there are misdemeanors and felonies associated with it. They carry different penalties. Um, mediation is another element that we deal with within the statute, uh, within our ordinances. And there are times where, you know, contractors will take money and not do services. There are crimes and criminal offenses associate that, with that, but there are also ways for us to help recover those funds through mediation and just make everyone whole. Contractor can walk away, uh, so to speak, from a job, and the homeowners can get their money back that they've expended and, and move on to a licensed, more reputable contractor. We've had some success over that as well. Future and continued efforts. As I said, we want to coordinate with the police department to conduct undercover stings. Um, we're in the process of doing that. We're gonna, we're talking about moving that forward. Increased construction site check frequency to verify proper licensing. This is something we just, you know, it comes down to time and staff. You know, any, anytime we focus our efforts in one area, it does somewhat detract from other areas. So if, you know, if you have more people and you have more time, you can do more work. It's just that simple. There's plenty of construction sites to check. We do plan on doing coordinated, uh, quarterly, uh, sweeps with the state and work comp. We did find it successful. Uh, again, like I said, logistically, it takes, it takes effort, and from everyone's, uh, perspective, everybody's busy. So getting them in the room, uh, we've, we've somewhat committed to, uh, trying to do a quarterly commitment with the state partners to make it happen, and I feel pretty good about that moving forward. We also have a great relationship with CCCIA. We have a, uh, dedicated phone line we created a few years back, uh, between us and the CCCIA partnership. Uh, we have a dedicated email address for unlicensed activity. So it, it gets channeled directly where it needs to go, and it's separated from all the other code stuff that we deal with, right? We wanted, we wanted this separated so we could see it more easily. We did that years ago, and we still do it today. Um, we want to coordinate a more, um, I speak with Mr. Johnson routinely, and I, you know, moving forward, we just want to s- kind of, um, solidify it, do a monthly meeting, monthly call at least, to make sure we're on the same page. If they're seeing any new trends that we're not aware of, they can provide that information. We can ask them questions. They can ask us questions, just to make sure that we have a constant flow of information. I feel that we do, but I think putting it on paper, and I've solidified it today with Billy and said, this is something we want to do moving forward, and he's completely on board. Um, public education, this is the key. It's like any other enforcement that we do, any other crime, any other court of ordinance violation. It's public education. The public can completely negate unlicensed activity with diligence. There are many, many programs. There's easy access to websites. There's phone numbers. It just comes down to their ability and knowledge of where to ask the question, um, to do their due diligence to make sure they're getting a licensed contractor. Unfortunately, it's the nature of the beast. People want to save money. We all know typically why they, there are some people that get, um, brought into it through great salesmanship. However, much of the time, it has to do with access to a, a licensed contractor and a price that they're willing to pay. It costs more for a licensed contractor. We all know that. It should. There's a lot involved. There's a lot of, uh, overhead associated with being licensed and doing it properly. Everybody wants to save a dollar. Unfortunately, it, they can really hurt them in the long run with regard to shoddy workmanship, workers' comp issues, injury on their property, and there's a, there's a myriad of issues that can occur. So the more public education we can provide, I think we can do better at, you know, negating this from, you know, it's a supply and demand issue, like any other problem. Expedited response to complaints we receive from licensed professionals. Uh, we do this. Basically, licensed contractors, we have a couple on our, on our dais, they, um, they see things better than we do. Uh, it's like your street. You're gonna see a code violation on your street because you see it every day, and you're familiar with what's supposed to be there. It jumps out at you. Same thing with licensed contractors. We try to develop relationships. I get calls all the time. I've known folks in the city for years. I'll get them. "Hey, can you take a look at this?" You're like, "Can you look at that?" Because they see things that don't look right to them. They're gonna, they're gonna identify it more easily than our code officers because they're in the industry. So we really want to promote that more and make sure they're calling. I've talked to the CCCIA. When they get complaints from their membership, the first thing they ask them, "Did you call code? Did you call the police?" And more times than not, the answer is no. Um, you gotta call. You know, we really want to promote that better, and we're gonna be expeditious in our response for those types of complaints because we feel that they're, they're a quality complaint, so to speak. You know when there's a violation. You have a better idea when, so we're gonna try to be more responsive to those when they're happening, at the moment they're happening. We do have some local licensing changes moving forward. You may or may not be aware. We're gonna bring more forward on this in the future. It's not happening overnight, but in seven-one-twenty-three, effectively, our city specialty contractor licenses go away. Everything's gonna revert and be preempted by the state. So that's gonna modify how we do business. It's gonna probably remove our need to have a contractor licensing board. More will come to you in the future. I'm not prepared today to give you all the detail on that, but it's coming. We've already consulted with legal, but it is, we can, we kick the can down the road a little bit, so to speak, because nothing changes until July of twenty-three. So we have some time to move forward and bring back information to you about that. But it will change things. Um, it'll make things a little bit more difficult for, uh, enforcement at the local level. Our current staffing, as I mentioned, uh, we have two full-time dedicated staff member. They are funded through the building fund, so there is no advent-on money going to their salary, which is a positive for the city residents, and a positive to the industry because their dollars are going to support them by trying to curb illegal activity, as well as making sure licensed folks are remaining and act, doing the activity proper within their licensure. That's all I have. Any questions?
Councilmember Tate?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carr. You know, I think y'all are doing a great job. Um, it was a lot worse a few years ago, and I think it is getting better. When I was speaking with Mr. Compton today, our new communications manager, um, he was talking about the different social media platforms and how, not cartoons, but make them a little bit more interesting. I think the, the biggest offender, and we got an email that really hit the nail on the head. People are just too busy to answer the phone, so they go looking for someone else who will answer the phone, and those are generally the unlicensed ones. But I would like to see us concentrate on, um, information now to the public on what a handyman can actually do, because I think that's the largest offender. And I don't think people are aware of what state law says that they can do. So the more information we can put out about that service, and maybe just quick little quips, as, as, um, Mr. Compton said, you know, if they're attractive, people will look at them rather than just language. So, um, this is what a licensed contractor can't do. An electrician can hang a ceiling fan, but a handyman can't, or something like that, because I think that's the bulk of what we see. Um, I don't think people understand that, um, kitchens, bathrooms, all those things that have electric, that need somebody to do that, you know, that is licensed. I don't think they understand that. So the more informative we can make it for the public, then I think that that is the best service that we can provide. But I think your department's doing a, a great job at, at the business at hand because it is a huge problem, um, throughout the city, but we're doing the best that we can. And I think people pop up every day in a new pickup truck with a new business card that they got offline, and you don't know. And if they're answering the phone and nobody else is, of course you're gonna go with them because it's so difficult. So I hope that just the key is communication for this, and to educate the residents, because I think that the contractors already know it for sure. We've heard from them loud and clear. But it's the residents that need to understand what's legal, what's not legal, and who can do it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. I was also talking with the communications director today, and one idea that I had was, uh, putting a link, when we do a link to the Florida, uh, license page. I, you know, for businesses, it's SunBiz, the, the, uh, DPBR, uh, to where homeowners can easily, if they go on the city, click that link, type in the name of the person they're looking to hire, and see if they're actually licensed too. So that's an easy way to get more communication out. That was all.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree. Also, education, I think, is, uh, the biggest component here that, uh, we can improve on. Um, and I think just informing our citizens of some of the, uh, some of the things that they should be looking for, um, they could almost probably, uh, help us a lot more than the manpower that we throw at them, uh, on occasion. So if we can get that information out there, give them the signs and the questions, you know, "Here's ten questions you need to be asked in your contractor," and have that, uh, available to them so they can, they can ask those questions. And I think, uh, if you go down those ten questions, uh, by the end of those ten questions, you'll know if that individual's probably licensed or not. So, uh, I think education's a big, big component.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Shepherd?
Uh, I agree with the other council members. I think, uh, the, the job we're doing, um, that was explained to us by our, uh, enforcement, that they're, they're doing what they can, but it's limited, and, uh, we can accomplish more by educating the public. Uh, I think we need to educate the public on what the ramifications could be as well. Uh, for instance, it was mentioned, uh, that we get people that trim palm trees and, and do things like that out of the back of their pickups, and they go door-to-door. Um, what people don't realize, if that person falls out of that tree and dies or gets injured, uh, he's gonna sue you, and you're gonna be liable, uh, for that person getting hurt on your property, where if it was a licensed contractor, they have insurance and things to cover that stuff. So there's ramifications for, for taking that chance.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Uh, thank you for the update, Mr. Carr, and we'll, uh, we'll move on to the next item. May, I saw your hand up, but we don't, we don't, we only have, uh, citizens' input in the beginning. If you'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Carr or a staff member a specific question, I'm sure staff would, uh, be able to answer whatever question that you may have. Uh, next item on the agenda, Mr. City Manager's, uh, mobile food dispensing vehicles ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank members of the public that appeared earlier and provided some input to you on, uh, a, a proposed drafting of an ordinance that will address, um, essentially food trucks. Uh, I just want, and you'll hear a little bit more about this in just a second from Mr. Bob Peterson, but essentially, um, uh, the state has preempted your ability to regulate many aspects of, um, these vehicles, these food trucks in your city. And essentially, what we are doing now is making sure that our ordinances are revised to, um, conform to the changes in state statutes. In addition, there's been a development now, uh, probably within the last year or two- probably within the last year or two, you know, one of the major trends in the food industry is not just food trucks, but the development of food truck courts. So, I know that we have received some input from the public outside of today's workshop, and that's something that I know the city attorney's office has taken a look at with our development services folks. But then there's also another concept, not necessarily related to food trucks, but it's related, and that is, because I know I've had a conversation with at least one of you today, and that's the issue of these food halls that are now popping up in many areas of the country, in many areas of the state. They haven't exactly made their way yet here to Cape Coral, although just several months ago, I know our economic development folks were in discussion with one particular entity that was interested in possibly creating such a, a destination here in Cape Coral, but that didn't materialize. So, the, the issue before you today is just walking, walking you through a conversation on this draft ordinance, understanding that it's still being tweaked based on the input that we've gotten, and hopefully, we can get some direction from you to allow the city attorney's office and staff to put those finishing touches on that ordinance before we bring it back to you, to set the public hearing, and then have the actual public hearing. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Peterson to take it over from here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Good, thank you. So, you'll see throughout this presentation, you'll see this term, "mobile food dispensing vehicles." And that jargony term was coined by the state and the statutory changes that they used. And so if I slip and say "food trucks," which people generically tend to do, the real title is now "mobile food dispensing vehicles." This ordinance, as you have in your package, 6121, would amend the land development code to establish the minimum standards for these vehicles for the first time in the city of Cape Coral. This ordinance stems from changes to the statute adopted during the 2020 legislative session as a part of House Bill 1193. And it, as the city manager said, the state has preempted most local regulation of mobile food dispensing vehicles, meaning we cannot require permits or site plans or, or that type of thing for the location of a mobile food dispensing vehicle that meets the statutory definition. And that, and that's key, I think, in, in some of our discussions today. And the other thing that municipalities may not do is ban food trucks in their entirety. Apparently, some communities have done that in different parts of the state over the years, and that's now banned by the statute. The definition is "any vehicle that is a public food service establishment," meaning there's some licensing for the state to do that, "and that is self-propelled or otherwise movable from place to place, and includes," one of the keys here, "self-contained utilities, including but not limited to gas, water, electricity, or liquid waste disposal." The self-contained nature of that definition is important as we talk about this subject. Give you a little background about food trucks in Cape Coral. They were not specifically addressed in the former Land Use and Development Regulations. Only hot dog carts were mentioned in there. And the former code was quite clear that if it wasn't specifically listed as a permitted use, they were prohibited. This prohibition did not apply to food trucks at special events permitted by the Parks and Rec Department, such as Bike Night and those type of events. There was always a provision in there that that, they were handled under those special permits by the Parks and Rec Department. In 2013 and 2015, as food trucks started to arrive in Cape Coral back in that era, the city drafted zoning regulations on a couple of different occasions. These ordinances got as far as public hearings, and they were not adopted. There was a lot of controversy over them, I'm told, at the time, and they just ultimately were not adopted. And at that time, it was acknowledged that about 18 food trucks were operating in the city at that time. It was generally an agreement at the city that we wouldn't pursue zoning enforcement of food trucks that were accident around town, that, but we would ensure that they got a city business tax receipt for the tax site of, of the world. So, but none were ever issued a certificate of use under the old code or a certificate of zoning compliance under the current code. And what, that's important to note, that means that none of the food trucks operating in our city have any form of grandfather rights with respect to zoning for their location or how their operations are conducted. They've just been there, I guess, at the grace of the city since, at, at that time. And when those ordinances failed, it was agreed to work forward on food truck legislation and include that in part of what was then envisioned as the upcoming updated land development code. And that, in fact, was done. And the initial drafting had regulations in there for, we called them food trucks then. And in 2018, it was agreed to pull those out of the code. We did that with four or five issues that were rather contentious in an effort to keep the project moving forward and get the new code approved, and it was agreed to bring those back at a future date. And we started doing that, and then, of course, the statute changed, and we had to start and do it all over again. So, here we are today. As drafted, these regulations closely follow the statute. We didn't want to steer away from that. They amend the use table within land development code to show all the zoning districts where they're allowed. They're all listed by, as a conditional use to have the standards there, so they, they need to comply with the standards. And that would be applied and informed and verified with them at the time they get their certificate of zoning compliance. And we amended the definitions in Article 11 of the code to match the new statute and clean up the old definitions or strike them where necessary. We propose that they're allowed in all non-residential zoning districts except preservation. So, that means the commercial zoning districts, downtown zoning districts, the neighborhood commercial, the Pine Island corridor, industrial, all of your non-residential zoning districts. Yeah, actually, this is the districts there on the next slide. They would be prohibited in the residential zoning district. Exceptions, this is a key point that folks often overlook. They may be allowed if, in a public park and recreational facility, regardless of the zoning district, because there's been an expressed desire to perhaps occasionally have these at parks and other facilities that might have residential zoning, and city parking lots or government-owned and leased facilities, and if they apply with the other requirements. So, we have an exception there to allow them in certain circumstances in those other zoning districts. Some of the general requirements that we propose in the ordinance, they all must possess and display a current and valid business tax receipt from the city of Cape Coral. That's in fact, a requirement of all businesses. They're supposed to have and display their business tax receipt for the city. During their hours of operations, they must display the written permission from the property owner where they're locating. So, it's, it would be easy if there's an issue to know that they have the permission of that property owner to be there. And they shall not block pedestrian or vehicle traffic entering, exiting, or maneuvering on a property. It'd be okay for them in a parking lot, but they can't block the flow of traffic for pedestrians or the public or the emergency vehicles. We have a regulation in here that they must be located on or over an improved impervious surface. That means concrete or asphalt. There's an aspect of that of just cleanliness and ability to clean up and not dirt and dust and debris being around where food's being served. And this would include any customer queuing or temporary seating areas would need to be on an impervious surface. Seating areas, including picnic tables and chairs and such that are not removed or put away at the end of the day, would be prohibited. You need to clean up and pack up. Otherwise, it starts to be, become more and more permanent if you start adding those facilities and never putting them away, and, and it then becomes a much harder to see how that meets that definition of a mobile food dispensing vehicle. We're permitting them to occupy otherwise required off-street parking spaces on the site as approved by the property owner. Our view here is it would be quite a stretch if a food truck came in on some sites, particularly smaller sites, to try and find somewhere else on the site to pave additional land, see if that falls within their stormwater entitlements and buffering and all those sorts of things. Many parking lots around town are not utilized to their full extent, as, as evidenced by the food trucks. I'm sure you all know where some are, that have been there for quite a while, and they seem to work just fine. Our view here is basically, if that food truck is becoming so popular that it's causing a problem with parking for customers of the business, the owner of that business or the property owner, and then has that option to terminate or adjust that relationship with that food truck to account for that. There doesn't need to be a government action to take care of that. They must be self-contained and prohibited from connecting to an external source of electricity, gas, water, or wastewater for operations. That's key to one, meeting that state definition. Two, there's fire code requirements that come with all those things and building codes and just life safety that comes with those things. If you have extension cords sneaking across parking lots or hoses connected to hose bibs for water or temporary connections to sewer lines and that sort of thing, the, the definition, the exemption of the statute is for the self-contained vehicles. So, they have everything they need to operate within that vehicle while it's at that site. That's not to say that other types of food vehicles could not be permitted, but they wouldn't meet the statutory exemption where they can get the, the pass on all the permitting and those type of things. They must provide a trash receptacle and keep the area free of litter, free of litter, and comply with the fire code. At public parks, recreational facilities, city parking lots, or government-owned or leased facilities, the location and hours must be approved in writing by the property owner. So, if someone wishes to have food trucks in Club Square, other than during special events, the city is the underlying owner of that property or manages it in the public trust, and they would, you would need to get permission from the city to do that, and that would spell out the terms of how long, when, where, and so forth. And whether they're serving customers or out of operations, they're prohibited from being parked overnight at city parking lots unless written permission has been provided to the city. So, that means, because there was an ordinance a few years back that dealt with trailers being parked at some of the city parking lots, we felt it was appropriate that if they are going to be parked there overnight, the city should be aware of that and should be included, and so everyone knows what the rules are for that vehicle to be And parked overnight means between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. There was some comment about this at Planning Commission at 11:00 p.m. That sort of implies they shut down at 11:00. There's been discussion that maybe that should be later to coincide with the bar closing hours. Certainly, we're not married to that, that timeframe. Could certainly be adjusted at your pleasure. And the maximum duration at the, at one location, this is on city property now, would be one day per, each week. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that be two days at each week, and we concur with that. We would just need to adjust that in the, in the ordinance. The reason for that is to sort of let everyone have an opportunity. We, currently, there are food trucks that come weekly to City Hall, and there's sort of a rotation of them, and each one comes one day a week or one day every couple of weeks, both over by our EOC building and over at the police station. And I, I don't recall any one of them ever being there more than one day a week, but certainly, that could be accommodated. Some mobile food vehicles are exempt from the regulations, of all these regulations, and those include the special events, as I've talked about before. People that have them on their private property for a party or a private event, lasts a day, not open to the public. We, we don't want to regulate that in any way. That's just part of having an event or a, you know, graduation or reunion or whatever. It's your property, and, and family and friends over, and that, we propose that there be no regulation for that. And they can operate during a declared state of emergency, because they're mobile and self-contained. They can be very important to provide that service during a state of emergency when power or other facilities might be out in, around town. The impacts of this, all existing food trucks will need to obtain a certificate of zoning compliance, and some changes to their setup, location, or operating characteristics may be necessary. And food trucks that cannot meet the definition of a mobile food dispensing vehicle may still be permitted as a commercial food service establishment in compliance with the LDC requirements. This may prove difficult for some operators. It may not. We, but there is a, there is a path there. City planning staff recommends approval of this ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended approval with that change to the maximum duration to two days, and staff concurs with that change. And what, I would also note, this had been in front of the CRA at least three times, by my memory, discussing this ordinance along the way before it went to Planning and Zoning Commission. The recent events that were mentioned earlier today about food truck courts and parks, we did have one proposal that was kind of floated to us a while back. I can't remember Vince, maybe it was six months ago. Covid, I can't remember, was before or after Covid. And there, there, this regulation wasn't, if the state it is yet, this ordinance, and we found a way to how that could be handled, because this ordinance was to deal with mobile food dispensing vehicles. So, there was a recent email, I think you were copied on to the city manager on this topic, or to the mayor, and you were all copied on it on this topic. There's two ways we could handle this. We've talked with the city attorney's office. We can easily make some changes to the ordinance to develop what the standards would be for the food truck courts or parks. That wasn't the original thrust here, but we could do that. But that would necessitate us going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for those changes, to make sure they're on board with those, and then it would come back to council for introduction and, and hearing. I, I do note that, I just noticed that in the Lee County ordinance, which I heard was adopted very recently, they separated that out. They went forward with their food truck ordinance and said they would be coming back separately with changes to deal with the food truck courts or parks. So, that's certainly a policy choice that, of however you'd like to approach that.
I had just a couple of questions. If you could go back to the slide with parked vehicles with the time, you know, I kind of see that could be a, a problem in the, in the South District of the downtown Cape, where the bar areas, you know, just because of the times that they stay open. So, one thing, one word that you could probably add or change the time is any unoccupied parked or stored vehicle. So, if just by adding "unoccupied", then that's a whole different definition versus if a vehicle's parked there that is occupied. So, that could be something that you may want to take a look at, or just look at the, the hours as far as the parking, parking, you know, you change it to a later time. But I do see that, you know, for instance, if a, a food truck wants to go down to Ralph's Place, that's a city parking lot, and they're there at 12:00 or 1:00 o'clock. That kind of could be an issue if you read this statute the way it's written, or this regulation. So, I, I think that we could either change the time or maybe add the word "unoccupied." That's, that's the only thing that jumps out at me when I read that. The other thing as far as food courts, I think we do need to have regulations in place involving food courts. I don't know if I would support holding everything up, since this has already been vetted by staff. It's already been vetted by the Planning Commission, so I have no problem moving forward with this particular ordinance. But I would like to see, in a very short time, staff begin that process to develop what regulations that we need to put in place for food courts, because I don't think it's a matter of if, it's a matter of when, that that may happen in our city. I'd rather be proactive, get the regulations in place now, maybe bring it back either for a revision or a second subsequent ordinance with, with this ordinance here that's already been.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. We, we, we can do that. The, the revisions you spoke of sound very reasonable and easy to accommodate, and it, it shouldn't take that long to bring, because we've already discussed the parameters if we do food courts either in here or as a separate ordinance. So, I think we, we kind of know where we want to go with that, so it'd be, wouldn't be a long turnaround.
Yes, I'm, I'm okay either way, whether, you know, we hold off. I would leave that decision to staff. If something that you feel is a need, that we need to get this in place now, I'm okay with that. And then come back and revisit the food courts in, in a short period of time. I'm, I'm okay with that as well. Councilmember Hayden.
Are you doing this on purpose?
Yeah.
I'm just asking.
Does it really bother you?
I guess it is, because the last one, he let you go first, but, you know.
I know.
I guess it is, because the last one, he let you go first, but, you know. I know. I see how you're going.
I promise the next topic of conversation, I'll let you go first, as long as you push your light first.
No, I'm kidding. I agree with the ordinance as well. The food courts are a separate thing, but using Rackham's billiard as an example, based on his concern. So let's say every Friday, he wanted to sponsor Food Truck Friday along Club Square and bring in five or six trucks, and maybe continue that over to a Saturday.
That would be...
Under this ordinance and under state regulations, and as long as he has the required license, the vendors have required licenses, and the city grants permit to use the parking lot, can that, can it be done in that way?
That could be done currently through a temporary use permit, or if it's large enough that it requires a special event permit through Parks and Rec. This ordinance wouldn't affect the ability to do that.
Okay. And if he wanted to stay, he brought the only place to get food late at night is maybe a slice of pizza. Would he be able, under certain circumstances or with permission, to stay open till 2:00?
That would be at your discretion. Right, right. That's the city's permission. I mean, because he's not the property owner. So it's up to the city how late someone parks or operates or those things in the city.
He could apply and ask for that. That's not necessarily, there's not a specific time noted in the ordinance, or is...
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So he would be able to do that. And in case where, you talked about the self-containment, I know that's a regulation, and our ordinance is mirroring state code, but could a restaurant owner that is sponsoring a food truck event offer that food truck owner to plug into his facility at all? Is there any leeway or any option there that the self-contained, if he has the restaurant owner's permission to plug into his facility?
Based on what I've heard from the fire marshal, I think the answer to that is no.
Is no, okay.
That wouldn't be safe, running extension cords from a food truck into some outlet at the restaurant.
Okay, okay. I think that takes care of my questions. I support the ordinance. I just wanted to get some clarifications on. Well, I guess the other one was, there's been some discussion with the owners of Abishan Homes about having food truck events on their property. Under this ordinance, are they allowed to do that without getting permission from the city? Would they need any kind of special licensing? I know, obviously, the vendors have it, but would they need anything that's different from?
Well, given the property I think you're talking about, this ordinance wasn't designed to cover that. There was a one-off look at that when there was an actual proposal floating around. Someone was, had the idea, but it was going to be a permanent food truck court, not just park there. They were going to have some roofed picnic-type structures, tables to sit at, restrooms, a parking lot, and hookups, you know, power and such. That's what we want this new ordinance to address, to make sure we capture that.
I just wanted to make sure that, but let's say if somebody wanted to put six food trucks along Trebling Tile's lot there along Del Prado, as long as he has a permission from the owner, they would be able to do that.
And follow the guidelines. This is geared to one food truck at a property.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Just one quick clarification, and that's mostly probably just for me, is the labeling in the table as a conditional use for the permitted districts. That term kind of varies wildly depending on the municipality and how they use that. A conditional use, is that sort of an application that they have to propose through you guys, or is that just basically another way of saying that it's a permitted use?
Those, it's not a separate permit. It's not a hearing. It's not a, many communities use that term.
They do.
For public hearing items. That's not the way we do it in the city. It means there's a set of standards that are reviewed and applied to their zoning compliance certificate.
Okay. Yeah, that's my question, because a lot of the times when I'm doing a conditional use, it's a whole process. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember...
That is correct.
Councilmember Tate.
Bob, could you go back to the definition as shown in the state for the mobile? So do they have to move or are they permanent?
The statute doesn't speak to they have to move. It's just they have, they, they're
So the one I'm thinking of particularly never moves.
That's correct.
And it is there, and it's not paying taxes like all the other businesses. So are we going to require that they have to be mobile and they move, or do they just stay there as a business operating with no other expenses?
This ordinance does not require them to move. And let me give you a little background here. One of the issues that, in the two attempts back in the day, one of those ordinances, I believe, one draft of it had to say they had to move every night and go to what's called the commissary. And that was, just wasn't going to fly. They just don't operate that way anymore. People supply their own. They don't go to commissary, and every night is quite, sometimes quite an arrangement to do that. The state doesn't require them to move. They are inspected, just as any other restaurant is. You see the inspection results in the paper every week, you know, which pass, which fail, whether they got good scores or bad scores. So the fact that they're at that location doesn't mean there's any health problems because they're regularly inspected by the state. It does take up the real estate, and actually, I'm surprised the property appraiser or the tax collector hasn't found a way to dip into them for that, but that's, that would be in there.
Yeah, I just, I still have a real problem with that, and I'm not going to get into the actual location. Mr. Carr is very aware of it, but I find it to be difficult for a business to have to compete with a food truck that never moves, and it doesn't have any expenses. And I, it just really, really bothers me. So back to, I think, what Councilmember Hayden asked about Trebling Tile. So if Trebling Tile, every other week or every week, wanted to have six food trucks at that park, at that parking lot every week, could they do that? Or do they, it's like garage sales, only four times a year at your house? Are we going to have it every week?
I do think there'd be no problem with having it every week there.
I have a problem with that. So I don't know about any other council member, but...
That's, you know, throwing away out there, because they're not planning on doing it.
No, I know they're not planning it, Tom. I'm not worried about one business, Councilmember Hayden. I'm worried about other businesses and what you're going to start going down this road. And the other property that you talked about, you know, that is the intent. And so then we start with food trucks every weekend in all these areas, and I don't want to see that. I just have a problem with that. So I kind of support the ordinance, but these are my issues. And the cleanliness of the community and keeping a food truck till 2:00 in the morning, you know, really at 11:00, if you still got it, I know that there are people that work, and I know that it's, you know, late, but we have enough issues downtown with the residents across from Club Square. Enough issues. And now we're going to encourage more issues by keeping those trucks that have the generators and make more noise till 2:00 in the morning. So I kind of support this, but I have a real issue with what our city's going to look like if we have every weekend in all the different parking lots that I can think of, food trucks around the city. I love food trucks. I mean, I think the ones that move from location to location, I've gone and had lunch and everything else. But there is a problem once you start opening this Pandora's Box, and I think that's why it never passed before. So I'm up in the air. We'll see.
Just a quick, go ahead, Mr. Keter. Can we define what mobile is? And the reason that I ask that is a point that Councilmember Tate had mentioned. You know, if you've got a person that pulls up, puts it in park, and that thing sits there for weeks on end, to me, my definition of mobile is something that moves on a daily basis.
So, Mr. Mayor, the one I'm thinking of never moves. It's planked, and it sits there. And it's just a permanent structure. It could move, I guess, if somebody would make it, but it doesn't. So that's what my issue is when it comes to mobile. Because think about how many of those, now, I know there was in 2013, 15, 18, when y'all discussed this before, there are a couple of hot dog vendors, and I think that was what brought the hot dog discussion in, that were in gas stations and stuff downtown. But the one I'm thinking of specifically never moves. And just think about that. A business owner is having a little bit of a struggle. He goes, oh, I'll rent out my space to a food truck, and then they never leave. Then you've got a business and a business, and how is that right?
So that's one of the key dilemmas here. I put this picture up. Hopefully, my phone won't turn it off. The state determines if it meets the definition, and they give it this decal. So that means it is a mobile food dispensing vehicle that meets the state statute as self-contained. The state doesn't dictate the frequency. If that's something you want to put in the ordinance, certainly that's something, that's a policy decision on how we locate them. I know there's one food truck, and I've been there many times. I know it hasn't moved in over five years. But it's got a good location. In fact, they've expanded now into a brick and mortar restaurant in addition to their food truck operation. It could work, I know. It could work either way.
Yeah, the other thing that just popped up, you take, there's a trailer at Home Depot. I've eaten there many, many times, but I believe they're connected to the electric and to the sanitation and the water there. How would we address that?
That would have to be permitted as a food service establishment under the code. If it's not, doesn't meet a mobile food vendor definition, then it doesn't meet the exemption. We can require permits for it. It has to be shown on their site plan. You know, it has to be, would have to be inspected, make sure it has proper, you know, whatever electrical or plumbing they're using. Does that pass muster with the code?
Right. Yeah, so it kind of gets back to what I mentioned before. I think we really have to define what mobile is, because I can see a lot of problems down the road if we don't, because, you know, the way this is written, basically, a person can pull up and park.
That is correct. And I think, Ms. Tate...
And the permit part, you know, like every week they can have it, so...
As we discussed, I think their very first ordinance is attempt nearly a decade ago now. We're getting close to that, would have had them move every night. And that wasn't perceived as very reasonable at the time, I believe. At one draft, one early draft of this, we proposed they have to move once a month. They at least got to clear out, pack up, move away for 24 hours once a month. So they clean up the spot, and, you know, and they could do whatever service they need or repairs on their vehicle and so forth. So we could certainly do that. It's just a matter of where that, where's that line going to be.
Right. Councilmember Shepherd.
As far as the mobile, I think they should have to move daily. And the reason I think that is because when somebody in the restaurant business decides they don't want to pay for brick and mortar, and they decide to be mobile, it's because they want to save money. But when that mobile vehicle becomes a permanent, then they're having impacts on our city that a permanent building would. Percolation is just one, you know. There's a multitude of things that when a structure is permanent, there's all kinds of rules that follow. So if they're going to stick a truck in one spot for a month, then all them same rules should apply. So, you know, is it a pain in the neck to have to move it every day? Yes. But I think when you make the decision that you're going to save all that money from having brick and mortar, then there are consequences. So I think it should be moved daily. The other thing is trash. We haven't talked about trash. You know, a restaurant or a business has to pay for a commercial dumpster, okay? We start getting all these trucks in our city. Where are they bringing their trash? Are they going to throw it in the dumpster behind the business that complains about all the illegal dumping in their dumpsters that happens to a lot of businesses? Another thing, I have a business, and I have to pay for a dumpster, and I don't even have that much trash, but I have to pay for a dumpster. I could easily bring my trash home when I leave work and put it at the curb with my home trash. That's not allowed. So where are they bringing their trash? You know, depending on what product they sell, they can produce a lot of trash, especially if they're a successful food truck. So where is their trash going? Okay? That's a liability for our citizens. The other thing is insurance liability. With a brick and mortar establishment that sells especially alcohol or even food, if there's a situation where somebody gets deathly sick because they made an error, or somebody gets intoxicated a little too much, you know, there's liabilities. There's insurance that they need to have. Also, for our citizens, they know who to contact because it's brick and mortar. Are we going to have a situation where somebody can get ill or drunk, and then when they go after the establishment, it's not there because it's mobile, and nobody knows if they had insurance or who they are, or, you know. So I'm concerned about liability for our citizens to make sure they're protected. Number two, I would like to know where their trash is going, you know. Are they going to be, all of a sudden, you know, we have, there's actually a trash can that I complained about on Cape Coral Parkway that I think a business just put in front of their business to be nice, and it has no trash in it from their business. And the thing's just overflowing with food trash, you know. I'm concerned that if a food truck comes in an area, are they going to be taking care of everything that they bring? You know, not including that their food sales, but where is their trash going? Are they a responsibility to take that trash and remove it? But how do we know it's not going in an alley in somebody else's dumpster? Or are they bringing it home, which is illegal? I have to pay for a dumpster, and I don't even produce a lot of trash at my business, mainly office trash. I could easily bring a bag home once a week and put it in front of my house, but I don't do that. I pay for a commercial dumpster because that's the law. So I'm not against food trucks, and, you know, I want them to be welcome in our city, but I want it to be fair. I want it to be fair for the brick and mortar, and I want it to be fair for the food trucks. And, you know, I want them to be treated the same as we treat our brick and mortar. And they, you know, and what I'm worried about is a little, a couple of the things that Councilwoman Tate is worried about, is if this takes off, there's going to be a lot of things that we're not even thinking about. But I thought about trash, and I'm wondering if our new council member, who is educated with alcohol, can he think of anything that, if any of these trucks, are they, any of them going to be allowed to serve alcohol? No alcohol at all? Not even at special events?
Don't know about that.
No? Okay. Hey, thank you. That's it. I'm finished.
Councilmember Nelson.
I would think they would have to have some type of licensing if they were going to serve alcohol. My recommendation hasn't, I mean, I'm sure we've all seen and been to mobile food truck courts in, like, Austin, Texas, Portland, Oregon. I think I even went to one in Turks and Caicos. And, you know, I have no issue with mobile food trucks and food courts, and I think it's great. And the mayor is absolutely right. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. We're behind the times. You know, we have a younger demographic in this city. We have a thriving entertainment district. I mean, Shannon Yates probably did it best with his food truck that was down always out for bike nights and concerts he would host, and there was no trash, no trash at all. I mean, granted, he had his restaurant, Brick and Mortar, right next to it, so he could probably throw it, you know, in the dumpster, but there was no trash. I've been to mobile food truck events at Millennial Brewing in Fort Myers. No trash. I would think, again, that they'd have to have the appropriate licensing like any business would. They were going to be serving food. In terms of mobility, you know, to me, timing, mobility, that's all a no-brainer. I mean, most of those food trucks that we see are celebrated in the entertainment area, 47th Terrace area, whenever we have any type of an event. So to me, you know, I don't, I don't want to take away that choice. I don't want to take away that choice from our residents. I don't want to take away that choice of, you know, you have options. It's so great to have options, you know, going down to our little entertainment area and being able to have, you know, 10 food trucks in options. In terms of the noise issue, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Tate, but, you know, I don't know. I mean, we have a 3:00 a.m. ordinance right now. I mean, I would prefer to have mobile food trucks down there. So, you know, God forbid if people do drink and drive, they can sober up maybe by eating a couple of tacos or some brisket or whatever, you know. And I honestly, you know, I would like to get this moving, and I would recommend that, yes, we approve this as is, and the food court thing, food truck court thing, we can deal with separately. But I would highly recommend staff go to larger municipalities like Austin, Portland, other, Sarasota even. I think I was at a food truck court in Sarasota a couple of years back. Like, check what their ordinance is saying. Maybe we can mirror those. And they probably address things like trash and, you know, cleanliness, and are they actually mobile, or do they, you know, do they have to leave and come back? Because I think some of those food courts in other municipalities around the country, I think they do have them leave and come back because they rotate them. Like, they switch out. You know, they'll have like, you know, we're going to have a Mexican food night tonight, or we're going to have, you know, Texas Roadhouse BBQ one night. So they... gonna have, you know, Texas Roadhouse BBQ one night, so they rotate them out. So I would recommend that we mirror some of those, but I'm fine with moving forward with what we have. And to me, you know, in terms of timing, I would time it right along with our establishments already in the entertainment district. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Welsh. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions and some opinions on these. The, one of them is on the self-contained and being prohibited from connecting. So I understand that some of these food trucks aren't just running off of a regular extension cord, that electric can be provided to where it's a more safe connection. Is there anything permitting-wise that they would need? For example, the owner of Rackham was here. If he had, if he put a electric up, would he be able to have that to where he could use someone to plug in electric if it was appropriately done? Like, is there a permit or something that he could apply for that has a different grade of electric?
Yes, that, conversations with the fire marshal, and he testified that this, the planning commission, there could be circumstances where that could occur, that would require an electrical permit and a fire inspection to see if that's a safe connection and arrangement and setup. That could be very site-specific. It still would have to be self-contained to meet the state.
To meet the standard and get, so the other, the other concern I had back at the planning and zoning, and you showed the sticker, was one of the companies I was concerned about, and the sticker you showed was from Greek Spot. They do own a brick and mortar that is their food truck, and they have to use a city parking lot to park it because that's, that's where they have, they don't have street parking. So I'm glad that that was adjusted so that all they would need to do is get permission from the city to park overnight. It would be somewhat like an approval from the city, since they, that would be their parking, is that how that would work?
Vince Cataro, Community Development Director. That's going to be a work in progress, because what we don't want to have is somebody that wants to put a hot dog cart out for two days, and it may not be tied to a special event and having to go to Mr. Hernandez every time that happens. We're gonna have to work through that and come up with a bona fide policy that we would recommend to the city council, because you have, as you know, numerous parking lots, and Club Square is one of the ones that people have their eyes on very much, if not the most. And you heard Mr. Gray's testimony earlier this afternoon. We have heard him in the past and dealt with him, and others that want to operate in Club Square, and we've said no, because it's, you don't own the property unless it's a public event through a special event permit, that's how they would be able to use that. Private property is gonna be a completely different issue. Public property is gonna get, is gonna get a little tricky on that, but we'll work out a policy in that regard. And I suspect you're gonna have many requests for that, depending on what you approve.
The other thing I see in here is the two-day limit for each calendar week. To me, I think enforcing that is gonna be ridiculous, and it should be first come, first served. If I'm, if my food truck is popular over at the EOC, and I get there at 6:00 in the morning, and I set up and I'm operating my business, I was there, you know, I put in the time. So, and public parking lots and parks like that, I don't see a need to put a limit on one day or two days a calendar week. I would just rather see it that they're properly licensed, they're there, and they're doing everything they're supposed to do. Because who's, who's gonna be in charge of saying, you know, Brooke's truck was here on Monday, they can't come back until Wednesday, or if they come on Wednesday, you know, if no one's there, why can't someone occupy it? So that's, that's kind of where I'm at with that. I don't see a need to put a limit days per week.
Good. Councilmember Long.
Yeah, just a quick question, reverting back to the, I guess, the separate ordinance that we had mentioned possibly discussing regarding food truck parks. What possible problems do you guys see that would be poised by those parks that would necessitate a separate ordinance? I'm not following what.
Well, the ordinance now, and Bob and I have talked about this, the way the ordinance is written, one could render an interpretation that the food trucks or the, whatever the state's calling it, or food, mobile dispensing vehicles. If you have a truck court, if you will, that could be allowed. It's not explicitly written, so in order to avoid confusion and challenges, we think that if the council wants that, it should be written into the ordinance, and then it's clear. And then it also gives you a springboard for requirements that you may wish to place on them as well. And as Councilmember Nelson noticed, there is an enormous amount of literature out there in the planning world that talks about the food truck or food cart, really food truck courts around the country. It's becoming, becoming very chic, and they're in a lot of different cities around the country. There's competitions, people travel, it's a cottage industry, so.
Sure, no, I don't doubt that. I know from my private practice, I've got a couple of clients, I'm doing about five throughout the state, that's sort of the next wave of dining. I had that conversation with the city manager earlier with regards to both food courts, and that's sort of a generic term, but they're better than they sound, and trucks. And also with regards to the immediacy of the surrounding areas, I know Naples has a food truck park down in Celebration Park, and I think to someone, I don't remember, which of my colleagues had suggested the idea, but maybe looking to see how the city of Naples, because I know they're very restrictive with regards to their codes as well, and how they might have won about handling the implementation of that park, that would be maybe a good starting point for some ideas for another ordinance tailored to that, if that's the direction that we had.
I just want, Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, I just wanted to say a few things and bring the discussion back, if I might, to when the ordinances were on the table, it's gonna be, next week will be, well, it's over eight years. This week would be eight years ago. As some of the council members may remember, there was an ordinance on the table sponsored by Councilmember Karyosha back in the day when single member councils, council members were sponsored the ordinances on their own. And I came in late October of 13, so in a few weeks it'll be eight years, and the ordinance was explained to me, and the main issue that we had was working with brick and mortar restaurant owners versus mobile food vendors. I'm just gonna use that term generically, mobile food vendors. And everything was put in a category, so bear with me for a minute. There was the hot dog cart, which was defined in the Land Development Code, that was fine with the old Land Development Regulations. You could have that. When I'm talking about the cart, I'm talking about the small cart with the different compartments. If any of you have been to a major city like New York, they're on every street corner, that's a hot dog cart. That was allowed under the old regulations. Whether people got a business tax receipt, I don't know. Whether they got a zoning compliance certificate, I don't know what happened before I came here. Well, enter the truck, which we know what that is, it can be driven. Then there was the, there was the food cart that you would hitch to your truck and drive and then put on a piece of property. And you see some of them, and you still do downtown. There was one that was, there's a small car wash next to the, on Cape Coral Parkway near Chester Street, adjacent, immediately west to the Starbucks. There was one of those there for months. There's one on Pine Island Road at the FOS Furniture Store that hasn't moved in the eight years that have been here. We did an inventory, and I'm sure this number is way off now, because it was eight years ago. We counted 19 or 20 when the ordinance went in front of the council. All these issues came up, and the council said, we don't like it, go back to the drawing board. So we went back to the drawing board, and we formed, at the council's direction, a stakeholder group. We had brick and mortar representatives, we had general public citizens that were interested, and we had mobile food truck business owners. There was no agreement. We came back to the council, brought the ordinance, council said no. So we're into 2016 then, and we're writing the New Land Development Code, so we said, okay. I went to Mrs. Sarlag, the city manager, and I said, here's what I think we should do, and he gave me the approval to do this. I said, if anybody wants to bring in a food truck that's on private property, or a cart, or the hauling cart, or some other device, structure, whatever you want to call it, they need to pay a business tax, but we're not gonna give them a zoning approval. That would put everybody on a level playing field, because there were 19 or 20 that were out there. And we will not bring in the ordinance forward, and we'll continue to work on it in the New Land Development Code. Well, we spent a lot of time on other projects, so we delayed it even further. That's why we're here right now, and we told the council that when it was adopted, the new code in 2019, it's gonna come forward as a calibration ordinance, and that's where we are right now. One of the things, too, that was discussed at great length, and I'll close with this, was what Councilmember Tate brought up, are they to be moved every night? We had a raging debate about that, as to whether they should be moved or not, because enforcement of that, you all know this, it's going to be, I'm not gonna say completely untenable, but it's gonna be very difficult to enforce that. Will we do it? We'll make every effort to do what you adopt, absolutely. But where it's gonna get very tricky is if somebody's moved on a Monday, and then they come back in on Tuesday, and they don't move again till Friday, we're gonna have to go back out, and then you start the enforcement process, which is basically issuing fines for people, unless there's something else written in the ordinance that allows police department to intervene and so forth, and it's considered trespassing. Public property, again, easier than private, so there's all kinds of issues there with that. And one of the debates that we had, going back to the stakeholder group, was most of the truck and cart owners said, I shouldn't have to move because I'm inspected by the state. So if the state allows me to stay there, I shouldn't have to move. I'll go to commissary when I have to, but I shouldn't have to move. Whether you agree with that or not, that's happening now. It's happening. We're trying to make, and we told everybody this eight years ago, because I said it, so I know it's true. We want to make everybody legal that's in the city, but we couldn't fit everything into one category. I don't know if it's good or bad, but when you see this definition, and if the staff in the back can call it up again on the screen, the state definition, it's up on the computer here, if they can just call it up. The mobile food dispensing vehicle, they put everything in one pot here. Any vehicle that is public service food establishment that is propelled, self-propelled or otherwise movable, that's everything. That's the drivable cart or truck, that's the cart you pull on your truck, it's the cart that you put somewhere else that comes out, I call it the New York City cart, and so forth. You see them all over the place now. There's a heck of a lot more than 20, I can tell you that, just from observation. So it really comes down to what your comfort level is, and that's broken up into a whole bunch of moving parts. Should they move, should they not? Where should they go? And the effect on brick and mortar. And I told you a fib a minute ago, Mr. Mayor, I said I would close with this, I'm actually gonna say one more thing, and then I promise, I'll stop. Some of the owners in Brick and Mortar came to us, oh, just hit a button, well, there you go. One of the owners came to us, several of the owners came to us afterwards, after we had discussions on two draft ordinances and said, you know, since 4:00 a.m. came, I got people leaving my bar at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, they're hungry, the kitchen's closed. There you go. Food trucks and carts started appearing. They weren't threatened anymore, at least some, at least some. I'm not talking about a regular restaurant. I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about a bar, a bar and grill or something like that, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I still think, for me personally, we have to define mobile. To me, mobile is just that, it moves in frequency, and we have to decide what that frequency is, whether it's one day, two days, three days. To me, that's what mobile means. I think that the other thing that's noted in that definition is just that, it's self-contained, and I think that's important. So if you are a mobile food dispensing vehicle that moves from whatever that time to time is, and that yourself, and are self-contained, and you have all the other parameters that's listed there, then you are a mobile dispensing vehicle. Now, look at some of the other types of vehicles that are out there. I gave you one definition, or not definition, one example earlier of something that you see at Home Depot. That particular type of establishment is connected to water sewer, and that makes it a whole different type of animal.
Correct.
And has regulations that they need to meet. So I think that's important to note, and make sure that we've defined that somewhere in our code. And then I think as far as public property, I think what Councilmember Welsh was talking about was, if I'm not mistaken, is if you have the mobile dispensing vehicles parked on our property, on public property, not private property, I think there still needs to be some parameters there of how long they can stay there, because the last thing that I want to see, and that's why we had that ordinance that I sponsored back in 2018, I think it was, what we had was, we had people in our, in our city using our city-owned parking lots for storage lots. And I don't want to see that either, whether it's a food truck, a box truck, a trailer, a cargo trailer, an open trailer, whatever it is, you know? I paid to keep my trailers at a particular location, I pay a monthly fee for that. So I don't want to see any other, any other type of vehicle, no matter what it is, utilizing our public parking lots, because not only are they using it for storage, then they're taking the accessibility away from our citizens to go downtown and visit all those different establishments. So that's how I, I see that when it comes to public parking, our public parking. And that's all I'll say for now. Councilmember Tate, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I support food trucks. I don't want anyone to think that I don't. I have a problem with a truck, and I understand that the truck can't move every day, I get that. But if it's going to take up residency and be a full-time business and never move, I have a problem with that. They don't pay taxes, they don't generate any revenue, they're making money, and the only person that's benefiting is maybe the business owner, whatever minimal rent they're getting, but we're not benefiting. And I know they get regulated, but I think they need to move. And that would be my biggest contention. I understand food courts, I've traveled around, just like Councilmember Nelson, I know it's a cottage industry, I know it's coming, we need to regulate it. I've heard development issues in Cape Coral, where they're thinking of going, that's another fight for another time, I believe. But I support this in general, I have a real problem with moving, and I also have a real problem with a parking lot like, and I'm, I'm sorry to use the name, but Trebling Tile, every week having a party there. I don't know if they will, but maybe somebody else would. And I don't know how many of those parking situations are like that in the city. So, I mean, we started with garage sales, remember? They used to be prolific in the city every weekend, and we went to four. So if it's a business owner's parking lot, and they choose every weekend to do a food truck, to me, it would depend. I mean, if Coralwood Mall wants to have a food truck weekend, hey, it's a shopping center. But something like a parking lot that's on Del Prado on a main road, is that where I want to have a food truck weekend? For me, no. So I don't know, maybe I'm old school, I know I'm old, but I understand it's a cottage industry, I just want to protect our city and keep it to the level of goodness that we want to stay.
Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll come back with a suggested timeframe, and then we can talk about that and see if you think it passes muster. I know from talking from other communities, when I've talked, they always stress to keep these regulations as simple as possible. The more complicated you make it, the more difficult it is to enforce and monitor and all those things. And the state's done a lot of that for us here by preempting our ability to many things. Excuse my voice today. I did want to touch on one comment that Councilmember Shepherd made. I think if we're talking about city property, and we want to, as a part of our permission, ensure that those folks have insurance, that's certainly something that could be part of the policy for how we administer that on city property. But I don't think we can reach into what private business's level of insurance is or what it may cover on private property. We don't do that for any sort of business, and I'm aware of currently. But what we do do in the ordinance is to require the written permission of the property owner to be posted, so should something happen, people know who's responsible for that property, and they can talk to them, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one final question?
Sure.
I'm sorry. So let's just say the Club Square and Mr. Gray's property. If you gave him a permit to run electric, and he ran electric from that, from our parking lot into his building, and that isn't properly covered, and somebody falls, our problem?
I would say, I would ask our attorney that question.
City attorney, our problem?
I assure you, you'll be sued.
Yes. Yes, that was my point. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Shepherd?
I'm going to stick, well, I want everybody to know that I want the mobile food trucks in the Cape, and I think a lot of the council people want them as well. We just want to make sure that it's done right, so that they're an asset to the community and don't have a negative impact. The mobile part, I want, I think they should be moved frequently, if not every day. And the reason is safety. I've been to food trucks or food trailers that never move, and when you're standing there waiting for your food, you look down, and their tires are dry rotted and half flat. You know if they start the engine, it might not start because the battery's going to be dead, because it's never moved. By enforcing that it has to be moved daily, the engine is being started every day, and they have to maintain the vehicle, because they're driving it daily, so it's obviously going to get maintained. We can have situations where there's a storm coming, we can have safety issues where police or fire need it moved immediately, and if it hasn't been moved in a week, and you got the fire department saying to the establishment, "Hey, you have to move this now," and they go to start it, and it won't start because the battery's dead, because it's sat there for a month, and they never tried to start it, or the tires are dry rotted. So I think if it's a mobile, if it's labeled mobile, mobile means move, and I think it should move daily. And I think, you know, because there's safety reasons. So, you know, if there's one point that I want to stick with, it's the mobility part. But like I said, I have no problem with the food trucks coming to our city, I just want to make sure that they're an asset and that we cover our bases, that's all. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. So one of the interesting things about public property, and we're not the only public property, there's the Lee County Building up the street, for example, just mentioning that, is we have private, a public property that falls into different categories. So, for example, we have public parking lots, in which the public is welcome to park. But we all know that there are certain businesses that are located on those, and that's their only parking. So, let's say there's a restaurant like the Greek Spot. As far as I know, the Greek Spot doesn't operate the truck there at Big John's, but it comes home to sleep at night, because that's their public parking lot. So, would we treat that differently than we might treat a food truck, excuse me, a mobile food dispensing vehicle that actually operates in a parking lot, in which one of our, in that same parking lot? It's open during the day and into the night, and whatever, and it's actually serving food or beverages? Then we have, so that's one issue, those are just some issues that those may be treated differently. We also have situations with public parks. Public parks are places that welcome people to come to engage in recreation. And so, in many of our parks, a food, a mobile food dispensing vehicle may be a handy thing to have, it can enhance your park experience. They can't be willy-nilly, because we also have situations where we may have a lease with a food provider already, and it does not allow us to provide, for example, other food operating enterprises on the same property. But a park is different than city hall, a fire station, the police station, so those are not places where people come and engage in recreation, those are business places. And so, they're not traditional public fora, they have, they are limited, because their primary purpose is to provide business services to the public. So, that's one of the reasons that those were being treated differently than, for example, potentially a park, where you might be more liberal with the how many or how often you have mobile food dispensing vehicles there. So I'm just wanting to say, we wear a lot of different hats. We wear a regulatory hat, we wear a property owner hat, and we also have some of these that kind of cross a couple of different categories. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Thank you. This is my last go-around, I swear. With regards to the, I guess, the mobility issue that everyone's sort of discussing, I know in the past, and currently, for example, I know Shannon with his food truck, I think he had to go through the city, and the city required a lease for that space in order to park it overnight. Does that ring a bell in any way?
For city property, sir?
Not sure that the property was city. It would have been at his own park.
My understanding is, since I've been here, the mobile units on city property had to have some agreement with the city, whether that was paid for or not, I, I'm not aware, sir. Most of the time, it was through special event permits and approval from the city and the payment of the permit cost. I'm not aware of a rental arrangement.
Okay. And then, Madam City Attorney, just a question regarding the discussion of whether or not we can define mobile. Since we're being preempted by the state, and in that statute, the statute itself defines the mobile vehicle, are we able to do that to any extent, or?
I'm not, I know there's been a lot of talk about defining mobile, but I don't think it's really a question of defining mobile, I think that's been preempted.
That's why.
I think it's more, what I've really heard the conversation focus on is, do we want to have a requirement of movement, of frequency of movement, not ability to move, but movement, which is different than defining mobility in terms of, are you a mobile food dispensing vehicle, which means you're self-propelled or otherwise movable from place to place? I'm hearing there is an interest in, by, at least some members of council, in exploring how often a mobile food dispensing vehicle should be required to move off of even private property. That's what I'm hearing. Am I mistaking that?
I don't think so. That's fair.
Which is different than defining mobile.
Understood. And then what kind of timeline are we required to enact the ordinance to comply with the statute?
Well, the statute took effect on July 1st of last year, so.
So we should already have one in place?
We're sliding along, we haven't got there yet.
Probably do something with regards to moving this forward in some degree, and then maybe come back with, I would suggest, I mean, we're over a year late, is that what you're saying? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
Thanks, Mayor. You can sometimes follow the history of good ordinances, they get derailed because elected officials want to take them to the extreme. I really don't see an army of food trucks coming down our streets should we adopt this ordinance. I don't see food trucks being permanently located in one spot, many of them, if we adopt this ordinance. It's not happening. You know, it's not going, it's not happening now, it's not going to happen in the future. Remember, the craze for food trucks really started when breweries started open, because the breweries weren't serving food. So the way to accommodate their patrons is they brought in food trucks. And that still kind of remains the same today, if you go to Scotty's on most weekends, or if you go to Fort Myers Brewing, or if you go to other places. So that's kind of the advent of food trucks. You know, it was a way for these business, businesses to accommodate their patrons by providing food, and I don't think, I don't think that has changed. I disagree with one day, because how do you define a day? A food truck shows up at 4:00, stays open until 1:00 in the morning, you know, is that a day, or is it a day until 4:00 in the afternoon? I can see possibly looking at parameters that figure into full days, but I don't think it, especially if you have a two-day event, or if you want something there for the entire weekend, to take care of your customer. So I think one day is too restrictive. I do agree with looking at some sort of timeline, but I just don't think that all of a sudden we're going to have all these food trucks showing up, especially on private property, again, using Trebling as an example, that they're going to have food trucks every weekend. It doesn't happen now, it's not going to happen in the future, you know, it's just, it's not, to me, it's not reasonable to think in those terms. So, you know, I would consider possibly looking at some sort of timeline, but I just don't think that it's going to bring on this rash of activity in our community. Thanks.
Councilmember Cosdine?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with that. I don't think we're going to get an army of food trucks after we pass an ordinance. I think we already know that there are many operating in Cape Coral right now, and I don't think that number's going to change substantially, just because we passed a new ordinance. I'd like to be the least restrictive as possible. I think food trucks, they do, I hear the complaints about them, like they're not paying property taxes and other things, but I think overall, they are a positive for the community. The only thing I would say that I would want to regulate is, if it's parked on city property, I would want them to move X times a month or whatever, and that number, I don't think anyone can agree on how often they should move, but, well, I'm sure we'll come to an agreement on that. But when it comes to private property, I don't think we should regulate how often they move. I think that's over the line. Thank you.
So I think, as I listened to all the conversation, I think it really boils down to, as City Attorney correctly pointed, the frequency of which, should they move on private property? And the other, as written, there was one day now on public property, and there was discussion of making that two. That number could be adjusted up or down as the council see fit, but that's a separate issue from the frequency, which if one is set up there, how often do they need to move off the property, and for how long before they return? And that would be certainly a change to the way it's structured now. We could certainly come up with a suggestion and look at other ordinances. The ones I've been looking at, I don't recall any that say one day. They, I think that's probably over, maybe overkill in the view of the communities that adopted those ordinances, but we could certainly look at a timeframe for that frequency and suggest that and bring it back.
Mr. City Manager?
So, Mr. Mayor, it looks like we still have some work to do. So I think realistically, we're probably going to need about 60 days or so to go back in and rework this, and so what I'd like to do is bring it back at another cowl, before we bring it to you to schedule for a public hearing, because again, I think, I don't think we're close yet. And so, we've got to do a little bit more, a little bit more work on this component, understanding that I see at least three different avenues that we need to take with respect to this issue. So number one is this one that's before you, then we're going to have to come back to you at some point to address food truck courts. And then, the other issue of these food halls, which are basically, as Councilmember Long described it, it's like a food truck hall, except without the food trucks. And so that, I know is the latest rage going on in some parts of the country, and I'm not exactly sure, then speaking with the city attorney, that our land development code allows for that also. So that's something that we need to look at. And then there's a fourth issue, you know, there's another trend that's out there, and that's converting shipping containers into these, and I recently visited one in Raleigh, North Carolina, where they've converted these shipping containers into this really eclectic destination, where there are shops and food establishments and things like that. So that's another aspect that I think we need to get ahead of, because at some point, those things are going to be knocking at their door, at our door, and I don't want to be reactive, I want to be proactive. But certainly the first step in this process, at least within the next 60 days, is to bring this back to you in and at another workshop setting, to go over the next iteration of this proposed ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.
Yep, and I appreciate all the work that staff put into this, and I know we've been having this discussion for many, many years, so I know we'll get to a resolution here eventually, here in the near future. I think what I'd like to do now is take a 10-minute recess, and we'll come back at about 5:55.
All right, so we'll be going over the UEP service area plans, the engineering design, construction contracts, and proposed phasing and schedule. So there's approximately 70,000 parcels existing service area. Then we added the six, seven, which is, I want you to kind of look at that 3.4 square miles and the number of parcels. Then we did North Two, and that's about approximately five square miles with 8,800 parcels. Now with North One, that's approximately that five square miles with 7,750 parcels approximately. There's some large parcels in that area. This is just the, the map that's showing the North Two area and the North One area that's covering east to west, north of Pine Island. So the original area is in orange, and we've added and are adding that area and that North One UEP additional service area. And that's to take care of all the utilities, water sewer, and irrigation along Pine Island in those larger parcels. The city council approved Tetra Tech engineering design. That was a nod to exceed of just over 10 million. Design is 70% complete for the original area and approximately 30% complete for the east area, more of a conceptual of, of the next steps of where we're going to go with that. So we've been discussing additional engineering design services with Tetra Tech, which will be coming back to the city, including that area. And so we have that area there that we're designing. There's some northeast 24th Avenue road widening that wasn't, wasn't in the original scope. And also there's some, some additional fiber optics design that we got to look at because the intent is to extend fiber optic, fiber optics throughout the North One UEP area. So as far as the design, the wastewater, there's 18 gravity sewer collection systems. That excludes the east area, which we haven't defined how many lift stations we're going to need quite yet. In the major area, there's two existing lift stations. There's going to be 14 new lift stations with six to 10-inch force mains. And there's two master pump stations. Those are the ones that look like a house. They're, they're larger and all the smaller lift stations pump into those. And then those 16- and 24-inch pump to the, eventually make their way to the wastewater treatment plant. We're extending the fiber optics, like you said, to the lift stations, master pump stations, and also potentially any other city facilities that are in, in North One. This is just a plan of the areas. You can see, sorry that you, hard to see, but the small dots are the lift stations. And so what controls our contracts and our areas is the wastewater. And it's controlled by the canals and the major roads. So we look at everything. And when you put in a lift station, you look at it to try to extend that gravity sewer as far as possible. So when we're looking at these areas, we typically refer to them as contracts, but then also service areas within each contract, depending on with the location of those lift stations. The water distribution mains typically six and eight-inch. Transmission mains in North One, 10-inch to 24-inch. We're going to have two 2.5 million gallon storage tanks with a booster pump station. And again, extending fiber optics to the booster pump station with the tanks. Irrigation, distribution mains are typically four, six, and eight. Transmission mains can be from 10 to 36 inches. We're going to have two 5 million gallon storage tanks with booster pump station. There are no canal pump stations proposed in North One, and again, extending fiber optics to the facilities. And so this is a map of UEP, and that area there is where the tanks are going. So the two water tanks, everyone see that's in Yellow Fever Creek. So that's been the proposed area where they're going. There's two, the two water tanks and the two irrigation tanks. And that will service North One plus future UEPs going north. Stormwater, we're replacing existing storm drain pipes, replacing existing catch basins, typically the open throat down to the three-inch weep hole, replacing cross-country runs and outfalls as required, based on the condition of the pipe and/or the capacity. Old catch basins may be donated to Lee County for an artificial reef project. We did that in North Two, put them aside, and they're now a reef out in the Gulf. So this is, this is a, an area here that shows just the storm drainage infrastructure. You can see there's a lot of little, little storm drainage areas. And so as we're going through, the idea is to, some of these pipes are getting, you know, towards 50 years old. Certainly the corrugated metal pipe is one will be replaced. And corrugated aluminum pipe might still be in good shape. So we're taking a look at that to see if, if any of those will need to be replaced. Certainly the ones across the roads will be as we put in the utilities. And, and this is also our opportunity to look at capacity issues, if there was any flooding, and upgrade the stone drain pipe. Construction contracts, right now we have 11 utilities contracts, which will be designed bid build. We have one contract, we're proposing one contract for two master pump station, which be, which will be construction management at risk. And then one contract for the two water tanks and the two irrigation tanks with the booster pump station, because that's one site. So the estimated project cost for North One right now is 250 to 280 million. Now, these are the contract areas. So you can see contract one through 11 and Del Prado splitting the project. So I wanted to show you this with the proposed phasing. So you can see from Southwest One to Southwest Five, they're all approximately 4,000 parcels. You can see Southwest Six and Seven got to 6,400. North Two was 8,800. And North One is 7,400. That was the original area. If you add the new area contract 11, it adds 350 parcels. So that's getting up there in size with North Two. This also gives the same comparison and it's, and it correlates is miles of road. You can see Southwest One through Five averages just under 40 miles of road, where in North Two, you're up towards 100. Six, Seven was 65. And we're proposing the seven, so you're 85 miles in North One. Why I'm showing you this is to compare the older UEPs. Six, Seven, North Two, and North One are much larger. So proposed phasing. So past council has, have, had voiced their concern that North Two was too large. It was just a lot of area ripped up at once. So based on the size, North One can be divided into two areas with two separate assessments. So Area A, we're proposing is West of Del Prado with five utility contracts. Area B is East of Del Prado with six utility contracts. This may result in a different assessment for each area. So this is one of the things we're looking for consensus from council.
Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. And I believe the next item on the agenda is 4B, number five, North One UEP update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. So we are now at a point with the progress in the northern part of our city with connecting our residential and commercial areas to the city's utility system. And so we've actually have two presentations coming up for you. This one that we're going to have today is focused on the next utility expansion area, and that area is known as UEP North One. We are coming back to you in November for a broader discussion on the UEP master plan that identifies where we will go next over the next 25 years, and that's coming back in November. So in the immediate timeframe, we've got some decisions that we need to make with respect to UEP One. So the focus of the conversation today, number one, is to give you a quick status report on where we are with UEP, where we are with UEP One, and more importantly, what we need from you in order to move forward with UEP One in a way that we think it's manageable for us to undertake. And so I'm going to turn it over now to your Public Works Director, Paul Klingon. Paul?
Thank you. All right, so we'll be going over the UEP service area plans, the engineering design, construction contracts, and proposed phasing and schedule. So there's approximately 70,000 parcels existing service area. Then we added the six, seven, which is, I want you to kind of look at that 3.4 square miles and the number of parcels. Then we did North Two, and that's about approximately five square miles with 8,800 parcels. Now with North One, that's approximately that five square miles with 7,750 parcels approximately. There's some large parcels in that area. This is just the map that's showing the North Two area and the North One area that's covering east to west, north of Pine Island. So the original area is in orange, and we've added and are adding that area and that North One UEP additional service area, and that's to take care of all the utilities, water sewer, and irrigation along Pine Island in those larger parcels. The city council approved Tetra Tech engineering design. That was a nod to exceed of just over 10 million. Design is 70% complete for the original area, and we're approximately 30% complete for the east area, more of a conceptual of the next steps of where we're going to go with that. So we've been discussing additional engineering design services with Tetra Tech, which will be coming back to the city, including that area. And so we have that area there that we're designing. There's some northeast 24th Avenue road widening that wasn't in the original scope. And also, there's some additional fiber optics design that we got to look at because the intent is to extend fiber optic, fiber optics throughout the North One UEP area. So as far as the design, the wastewater, there's 18 gravity sewer collection systems. That excludes the east area, which we haven't defined how many lift stations we're going to need quite yet. In the major area, there's two existing lift stations. There's going to be 14 new lift stations with six to 10-inch force mains, and there's two master pump stations. Those are the ones that look like a house. They're larger, and all the smaller lift stations pump into those, and then those 16- and 24-inch pump to the, eventually make their way to the wastewater treatment plant. We're extending the fiber optics, like you said, to the lift stations, master pump stations, and also potentially any other city facilities that are in North One. This is just a plan of the areas. You can see, sorry, hard to see, but the small dots are the lift stations. And so what controls our contracts and our areas is the wastewater, and it's controlled by the canals and the major roads. So we look at everything, and when you put in a lift station, you look at it to try to extend that gravity sewer as far as possible. So when we're looking at these areas, we typically refer to them as contracts, but then also service areas within each contract, depending on the location of those lift stations. The water distribution mains typically six and eight-inch, transmission mains in North One, 10-inch to 24-inch. We're going to have two 2.5 million gallon storage tanks with a booster pump station, and again, extending fiber optics to the booster pump station with the tanks. Irrigation, distribution mains are typically four, six, and eight. Transmission mains can be from 10 to 36 inches. We're going to have two 5 million gallon storage tanks with booster pump station. There are no canal pump stations proposed in North One, and again, extending fiber optics to the facilities. And so this is a map of UEP, and that area there is where the tanks are going. So the two water tanks, everyone see, that's in Yellow Fever Creek. So that's been the proposed area where they're going. There's two, the two water tanks and the two irrigation tanks, and that will service North One plus future UEPs going north. Stormwater, we're replacing existing storm drain pipes, replacing existing catch basins, typically the open throat down to the three-inch weep hole, replacing cross-country runs and outfalls as required, based on the condition of the pipe and/or the capacity. Old catch basins may be donated to Lee County for an artificial reef project. We did that in North Two, put them aside, and they're now a reef out in the Gulf. So this is, this is an area here that shows just the storm drainage infrastructure. You can see there's a lot of little, little storm drainage areas. And so as we're going through, the idea is to, some of these pipes are getting, you know, towards 50 years old. Certainly, the corrugated metal pipe is one we'll be replacing. Corrugated aluminum pipe might still be in good shape. So we're taking a look at that to see if, if any of those will need to be replaced. Certainly, the ones across the roads will be as we put in the utilities. And this is also our opportunity to look at capacity issues, if there was any flooding, and upgrade the stone drain pipe. Construction contracts, right now, we have 11 utilities contracts, which will be designed bid build. We have one contract, we're proposing one contract for two master pump station, which will be construction management at risk, and then one contract for the two water tanks and the two irrigation tanks with the booster pump station because that's one site. So the estimated project cost for North One right now is 250 to 280 million. Now, these are the contract areas. So you can see contract one through 11, and Del Prado splitting the project. So I wanted to show you this with the proposed phasing. So you can see from southwest one to southwest five, they're all approximately 4,000 parcels. You can see southwest six and seven got to 6,400, North Two was 8,800, and North One is 7,400. That was the original area. If you add the new area contract 11, it adds 350 parcels. So that's getting up there in size with North Two. This also gives the same comparison, and it correlates is miles of road. You can see southwest one through five averages just under 40 miles of road, where in North Two, you're up towards 100, six, seven was 65, and we're proposing the seven, so you're at 85 miles in North One. Why I'm showing you this is to compare the older UEPs. Six, seven, North Two, and North One are much larger. So proposed phasing. So past council has, had voiced their concern that North Two was too large. It was just a lot of area ripped up at once. So based on the size, North One can be divided into two areas with two separate assessments. So Area A, we're proposing is West of Del Prado with five utility contracts. Area B is East of Del Prado with six utility contracts. This may result in a different assessment for each area. So this is one of the things we're looking for consensus from council, is to split North One and have a North One A service area, a North One B service area, and phase it in, start with the North One A, focus on that, get that out to bid, get the assessments, start the construction, then we'll roll into North One B service area and spread out that construction. Because again, it's a very large area. So proposed schedule is pre-qualification of contractors and bidding, initial and final assessments, and start construction in 2022. Construction contract times are typically 18 months to 24 months for the bigger ones. The goal is to complete North One construction at the end of 2024. Any questions?
So I guess what you're asking is if we want to divide that up into two different projects, basically?
Yes.
Like a 1A and a 1B, I think you and I-
Correct, if, I can go back to the, if the screen-
I would support that. You know, one of the problems, you know, that we had in our last UEP project, you know, sometimes we'd go in, tear the road up, and then the residents wouldn't see anything happening for six or eight months.
Yes.
We want to make sure that we don't do that again, and I think bringing it down to a smaller scale type project would hopefully help in that situation where we kind of stay confined in whichever area we start first and then move over. So I would support the two, the two projects moving forward. Councilmember Tate?
Has everyone been noticed in North One A and North One B? I know North One B probably has, but has everyone been noticed in North One A?
Noticed as far as-
Noticed as they bought a house here and there's going to be utilities?
I don't, I don't know. It's, it's on the website. I'm not sure if we-
My answer would probably be no. So, and this is probably one of the less expensive areas in the city, so the sooner we notice everyone, the better. That's why I've been pushing to get that map.
Absolutely.
And I absolutely think you have to split it in two. We remember the era of old when, I know I'm the oldest one up here, so I'm just going to say the old, when we did all the square miles together, and it was a disaster, and it looked terrible. And values are good, so I don't think, you know, property values are good, vacant land values are good. I don't think we're going to have that issue, but notification is critical.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we haven't noticed these people and we're expanding it-
It, the North One area hasn't changed in years, so except with the addition to the eleven.
Except for the addition that you just added, right.
But, yes, we will notify more, now that we have more details, especially if council directs us or gives us-
And so when you split it into two, North, let's just take, we're going to start with North One B because I'm assuming that's got the highest-
We're going to start with North One A first.
Okay, so we're going to start with North One A. Two years?
The, the, the plan would be start construction in 2022 and certainly complete it before 2024, then roll into North One B within hopefully nine months or a year of the start of construction for North One A and-
Okay, so two years here and two years there, pretty much.
Year and a half, yeah, the, the goal is to get everything done.
Because it will go on the tax rolls. So that is what my concern is. People that are buying a home, once that payment, the way I believe you still do it, is when the assessment starts, it goes on the tax rolls, whether the work is completed or not.
That is correct.
So they need to be noticed because that's going to change their ability to buy a home in this area if they can't make that monthly payment, assuming that assessment, and they're going to need to know that amount.
Correct, and that was in North Two, such a large area, when we did the assessment, it did go on the tax roll. That was one of the calls we got is saying, "I'm starting to pay for this, but I haven't seen anybody on my street yet."
Right.
So, so yes, we'll be working with finance on the assessment portion.
Generally, what we're telling people is it's $20,000, take it, you know, give or take. By the time you crush the septic, do the hookups and all of that with capital expansion fees, that's kind of what we're saying, but we're going to need to know for these homebuyers up in this area, because there's a lot of activity going on up here, especially with spec homes. Lots of builders are going in these areas. So we really need to be cognizant of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Just a point of clarification. So as part of the assessment process, we have to notify all the property owners.
Right.
And so I know you said, "Have we noticed the properties yet?" So I just like some clarification. Are you looking for a, prior to the official notice of the assessment, are you looking for some sort of public notice from us that says, "Hey, we're just putting you on alert, you know, your area, your property's in the North One utility expansion area. You are likely to receive in the near future a special assessment to cover the costs."
I am absolutely looking for that.
And so you're looking for each individual parcel owner to be notified?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
The sooner the better.
Yep, and I think a good way of doing that is a water bill, just putting a notice in the water bill.
No, they don't have water.
Unfortunately, they don't have water.
They don't get water bills.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
And nobody, and a lot of people pay online. The only way you're going to do it is by mail or, they've got to be noticed.
Yeah.
By mail or however you do it, but they have to be noticed and sooner than later.
And certainly, based on our discussion tonight, we'll, we'll clarify that 1A and 1B.
Yeah, because there are a lot of spec homes going up right now, and that means that, you know, maybe they would slow it down because we have the ability for builders to build knowing that it's coming in, and then they hook in when it's complete. So that's one of the newer things we added a couple of years ago, so it would make it easier for builders to build in these new areas.
Yes, and we'll also start the process of with, with new permits, letting them know-
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're at that point, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden, I'm going to let you speak before me this time.
No, actually not, because I think you actually got a few words in there, but that's all right. Yeah, I think that notification is especially important because if all those that thought they were going to be in one big assessment area now may have to wait 14 or 15 months later, which, we're doing the right thing by dividing it up. I completely understand that. One thing caught my attention, though, there may, there may be different assessments. So had they all been in one assessment area, the amounts, depending on property size, would have been roughly following the same schedule. Now, if you delay two, a year and a half, supplies may go up or whatever, and they may have to pay more for the same thing that 1A is getting. That, that concerns me a little bit.
Well, this is, this is why I put that there, to bring that to your attention, is North Two was one big area, so everyone got assessed the same. So now you're looking at this as two assessment areas, and that's why I was showing you the other UEPs were much smaller. So you're right, is when we do the North One A assessment, we're going to have the CFEC capital, facilities expansion charge, then we're going to have the square footage for the EPs. And certainly, when we do the next bid and we do the math, yes, costs could go up.
Yeah, especially if we're looking at, they have to pay-
They could do it now.
They, they could, but, you know, there's just that little bit of an unknown that you wouldn't have had. Yes, it absolutely makes a right call, but I would hate to see costs, yes, it could go down, go up three or $4,000 for this group or-
What we're hoping is that is, yes, costs could go up, but they could go down with, is the contractors that have been North One A, and they're finishing up, and now they're looking at North One B, they may roll in and, and we're hoping that the, the bids will be better, but we can't predict that. So just one, that's why I wanted to point that out, so the assessments may be different.
Okay.
As far as that value.
All right.
Councilmember Cosby?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so on that point, I like the idea of splitting it up, but I don't like the idea of differing assessments, if it's going to be, especially if the people in B have to wait more time than they thought, and then they might have to pay more, they might pay less. But do you have any idea what the differential could be? Could it be $3,000? Or are you just thinking like a couple hundred?
At this point, until, the key is until we get the bids, we just don't know what that differential will be. Certainly, the CFEC will be locked in that piece, and it's just the square footage portion that's based on the equivalent parcels.
Okay, that's a tough call. I don't think that's an easy decision because, because of what it could do to the people who live in B.
Right, I think that's why, like when I was showing you the sizes, if, if you can just, again, if you could turn back the clock, we might have called this two different areas. It's so big. So, and they would have had two separate assessments anyway. So North Two was just too big as far as for the citizens, for the construction, the constructability issues. So there's a whole, whole lot of positives, and yes, the one negative is, is that perception that North One A might be a little less than North One B or, you know, vice versa.
Having lived through North Two myself, I will say that yes, it was too big, and there were issues, and I'd love to not have those issues here. So I guess I tend towards splitting it up. I just, it makes me nervous. For the notice, I think it's a great idea to send a notice before the actual official notice, but I would want that to go through the PIO's office before it goes out, and I don't want any jargon. I want it to be in like plain English. People have so many questions, and when I saw the actual legal notice that went out for the last one, it was hard to understand myself as a homeowner, so I'd like for anything that goes out about the UEP in the future to be user-friendly and easy to understand with clear instructions on how to get more information, like a hotline even or something.
Okay.
And we can certainly do that, but when the official notice goes out for the assessment, do we have to follow state law on that?
That, you know, Patrick and I just talked about that today. Is it possible for the official notice to have the jargon and then have a separate little insert that's normal English for people to understand?
Yeah, we, we can work on that clarity, certainly. That's when you say the actual assessments, when they actually see what they're going to be paying.
Right, like the state-required document that we send?
I'm sure we could make it more user-friendly.
Okay. No offense, I mean, I think you guys do a fabulous job, but people just don't understand half of what they're getting from us.
And, and, and as everyone, I think, knows, is certainly when the assessments go out, we have the public meetings on it, and they, we have everybody come, if they want, to the, to this chambers, and we set it up, and we talk to the individuals, what's happening at their, you know, then we have a whole group that sits in the room, and any questions on the assessments, you know, individually, and finance is always there to ask, answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. I am 100% for splitting it up into two. This way, it gets done faster, and it leaves people without having to drive on unpaved roads and get their car washed every other day and, and things like that. I'm not as concerned with the cost. The cost is what it is when the bids come in. So whether it's more money for North One B, they got to do another 18 months without having to worry about hooking up to city water. You know, there's going to be pros and cons on both sides of this, and I just think getting the job done and getting it done quickly is what I'm looking for. So I'm definitely in support of splitting it to 1A and 1B and getting this finished. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
I just want to say that staff feel confident that splitting it will cure the problems of the past. And what I mean by that is, and I, and I have no idea, I'm just, have questions. I know with some projects, like when somebody gets a pool done at their house, it's advantageous for the pool builder to dig the hole right away because he gets a draw, and then he doesn't come back for a long time, and it's, they have this big hole in their yard forever. Is our payment structure on how the project takes place, is it going to be a situation where the contractor rips up the entire North One just because, you know, they, they can get a draw, they can get money? What I'm trying to explain is, are we designing the project to work in a way where it is efficient, but at the same time to not be ripping up streets when it's not necessary? You know, and I don't know it to be true. My example, maybe it's not true at all, but it seems like streets were ripped up way early then, then they really needed to be ripped up and caused chaos and traffic problems and drainage problems and people damaging their cars and, and all that. So what I'm concerned is, my concerns are two, do staff really think that splitting it into two projects is the right answer, and that we cure all the problems so that we just don't have a smaller project that runs rampant as well, where streets are ripped up six months before they're touched? You know, do we, do we look at that and, and, and set parameters to make sure that builders don't get, or develop, you know, the contractors don't get ahead of the game where they create, you know, liabilities and inefficiencies for us?
Thank you.
That, that's, that's my concern. So I'm hoping that we're all not voting on a cure that, that might not be the cure.
Splitting it will certainly help us go in that direction, but that's one of the things we've been talking, lessons learned in six, seven, North Two, is one of the biggest complaints is, I had pavement, and they're waiting for that first lift of pavement to go down. That's when you have the dust and/or the mud. So we've been looking at different ways to keep that as tight as possible, so we'll control the contractors as far as ripping up too much pavement. So the idea is, you know, and, and that was problematic in North Two, it was such a large area, and all contractors were leased to go. We still try to follow that, but it was such a big area, you felt like you were always driving in an area that didn't have pavement.
So you think you'll have a, staff will have a better control?
We will have a better system in place that will control the contracts and, and limit how much pavement can be ripped up. And, you know, and the split for Del Prado is perfect. There's, there's some work with jacking underneath Del Prado, but Del Prado will still, you know, flow as far as traffic. North Two was a little more problematic with that size, and there was a lot of major roads going through it. So by splitting it, we'll be able to focus with the major roads and isolate MOT and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, I don't see any other lights on, any other questions? Mr. City Manager, did you get the direction you're looking for?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Klingon.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next topic, which is item 4B6, Waste Pro update. Mr. City Manager?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I don't necessarily have a presentation for you. This is just merely a follow-up from a conversation that I had with, with members of council last week, where I alerted you to a response that we had received from Waste Pro following your discussion at your previous cow wherein staff presented a proposed settlement. Council discussed it, and I think you made your position known in terms of what you were looking for. Staff took away, you established the floor in terms of where you were looking at in terms of negotiating, which is somewhere around 747,000. After that meeting, before your next regularly scheduled meeting, we did receive a, a, a formal response. Bill Jones and I have not had an opportunity to discuss it at all. I think this was something that was sent to him by his corporate office, and he was tasked to send it over to us. I, I felt that it was my duty to at least let you know that we had gotten a response from Waste Pro, and basically, I'm looking for some guidance from you as to, you know, do you want to respond? Do you want to ignore it? Do you want to just stick to your guns as you discussed at the last meeting and basically say that you're not open to anything that deviates from the 747? So I'd like to get some, some, some direction from you.
Okay, I just had one quick question before we get into the discussion. The 111,597, which is, which he had in our last presentation regarding additional franchise fees, could you explain that?
Sure, so I'm going to take a stab at explaining it in plain, in plain English. So as part of Waste Pro receiving the privilege of providing waste collection services to our residents, we charge a franchise fee. And that's, again, for the privilege of using the city's streets and things of that nature. And so that's actually revenue that gets paid by, by Waste Pro back to the city. In my understanding, Mr. Mason Holler, if I'm wrong, the franchise fee currently goes back into the general fund. And so again, that's a payment from Waste Pro to the city for the privilege of being able to provide the service. It's very, very common, both in terms of waste collection, some cities even charge their own water and sewer systems a franchise fee to, for, for that, for that privilege. And so that's, again, it's based on the invoice amount. It's a certain percentage, is it 8%? It's 8.5%? 8.5% of the invoice amount that essentially gets rebated back to the city for the privilege of allowing them to do business in the city.
And in that presentation, it says additional franchise fees of that 111. Could you explain that, how that additional number came about?
So the franchise fees are based on the amount that is paid by Waste Pro, and so Waste Pro has been retaining a certain number of franchise fees based on what we have paid them as far as their monthly invoices. Because remember, they have submitted an invoice- them as far as their monthly invoices. Because remember, they have submitted an invoice, but we have not paid the full amount of the invoice because we have withheld funds. So, basically, the franchise fees that they have paid, have, the franchise fees have been based on the net amount and not the gross amount that was invoiced to us.
Okay, and, and just to recap, looking back at the previous presentation, it appears that we had, you know, one thing I, I want everybody to keep in mind, there were several months that we were having problems that we were giving notice to Waste Pro and then eventually we had sent a letter to them and gave them 30 days to, uh, correct the problems that they were having. And if not, then we would levy some type of administrative fees. Then we had to, as we all know, go down that course. So, it was a several month process. It's just not something that we started levying fees against, against Waste Pro. So, as a result of when we started levying those fees, we had vetted and identified 5,406 complaints. We all know we had a escalator as far as beginning with 250 a month and going up from there. I think it went up to 750. As a result, we had accrued 2.1 million dollars in what we felt were administrative fees for failed performance by Waste Pro. In addition to that, the city had to pay 308,069 dollars for services that we rendered where we had city staff actually go out and pick, I believe, horticulture up in our, in our city.
That's right.
And then you add the 111,597, uh, onto the, those numbers were at 2.5, 2,581,161 dollars. And if you take a look at the offer that Waste Pro had presented, they had 210, 644 that they offered originally. They offered another 238 and 59,000 in kind for a total of 507,644. Now, the 308 and the 111 that we spoke about in our previous meeting, I think we all agreed that we kinda gotta set those numbers to the side because that's, that's a whole different animal that, that we're talking about. So, I think that's important for us to do that in, in these discussions. So, if you take the 507, 644 and you take a look at the 2.5 million dollars that we have accrued, if, if you add all those, they've only offered about 19%, a little over 19% of what the total amount that, that we have charged in with administrative fees. If you just want to do apples and apples, you take a look at the 507 to the 2.1 million that we accrued in administrative fees. It's about a 23.5% is basically what they've, what they've offered us. I think early on, and I believe Councilmember Welsh had brought it up and, you know, if you take the 138.24, you times that by the 5,406 complaints, that's where you come up with that 747, uh, 747,325 based on 138.24 per household because that's what each household pays. And I kinda agree with that methodology and I'm, I'm willing to, to, to go down that path if this council decides to go down that path. And you still have to add the 308 of the fees that we incurred that our city staff went out and you still have to add in that 111. And if you do that, we're at 1.1 million dollars basically and what they're offering is the 507. So, I think we're heading in the right direction. For me personally, we're not there, quite there yet. You know, when I take a look at all the charges, the 1.1 versus the 2.5, that's over half of what we've, what we've charged them. So, I think we're being more than fair. You know, they've been a partner in our city for many years. We still want them to be a good partner. We have several years left on our, our contract, but we have to all remember that we're not doing this for ourselves. This is for the residents and the, what they had to go, go through during these times and all the complaints and all the emails that we got. You know, this is for them. I'd like to utilize this money some way and give it back to our residents once we figure out exactly what that dollar amount's gonna be. So, that's where I'm at on this. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Stacy or Paul, just to kind of go way back and I apologize because I don't have all the previous presentations in front of me, but the original, excuse me, 5,000 or so complaints, in the contract it states that they have to be verified and, and have to be rectified within 24 hours. Did we have a methodology, I'm, I'm only asking this question because moving forward, should there be litigation, which I hope not, you know, that, that we have this information. So, can you verify for me, were they all verified? All of those complaints? I just want to make sure.
When we looked at the, you know, we kept track of the 311 calls. And so, the decision was, and I think it was discussed at one of the council meetings, is we'd look at it and we'd make sure that there wasn't any doubling up. So, if someone called twice, that was considered one, or someone called, you know, for the whole street, we couldn't verify that whole street. So, we went through and vetted the 311 calls to get to that 5...
Is that what our methodology is normally? When we have a complaint, we, we verify it by just a 311 call? Or do we, because I mean, I'm just using this example. I probably had, out of all of the complaints that I received, I'm gonna guess about 10 to 15% of them were not real. In other words, I went to drive myself or I would send Waste Pro there and I'd say it's not here.
We did not verify every 5,406, if that's what you're asking.
What? They didn't verify? Okay. So, we don't even know like if, like, because I mean, I know that some of the ti, well, all the time really, when I called Waste Pro, they were pretty quick to get on, you know, to get on the issue. And my only concern is, is if we don't have, we don't have true verification, you know, that's, that's a concern. I mean, to me, in terms of liability for the city. In other words, you know, if we're just verifying with 311 and, and, you know, 10 or 15% of the messages that I got, that I either verified myself or had Waste Pro go verify and they say, "Sorry, the trash isn't there," or "No, that's not what it is," or, you know, "We picked that up." Like, I, I just have concerns.
So, yes, to answer your question, we couldn't go out to every 311 call.
Sure. Not realistic. I get it.
But we did go through them and Stacy actually went through H1 very meticulously and vetted them to make sure there was no doubling up, what they were to make sense. We did have someone go out and do some random checks and, you know, see what was going on, but the, the best method we had at the time was to use the 311.
Sure.
Complaints, because that was documented and logged and...
Okay. I mean, I do agree also. I really did like Councilmember Welsh's logic in terms of coming up with that 700,000 dollar number. I'll wait to see how other council members weigh in as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hayden.
Over the last month and a half, I think I went back and forth on this in my own head a million times. First, when it, we first got the amount, I was kinda willing to move on. Then I listened to the rest of my colleagues and got more information and thought then that the amount was too low. And then when Waste Pro came back with the additional 238,000, I thought, all right, this is, this is significant progress based on the formula that Councilmember Welsh was using. But again, none of these complaints are really verified and we can't really substantiate anyone, anyone. And that also doesn't include all the other complaints that were sent to us or received by us or called into Waste Pro or whatever. But, so I thought, all right, we're, I like, you know, I, I like where we're at now with, with, with this extra money. And then, and maybe I started to complicate it too much, but I started to think, well, all of a sudden they come up with 238,000 extra dollars, which is a lot of money. Have they set aside a certain amount of money knowing this was coming? And do they have more that they're willing to give because of, of this amount, knowing that we wouldn't be satisfied? So, I guess I got concerned that, you know, they came up with this extra money without any real hard negotiation and it was available. But now what else is available, knowing that they, they realized the mistakes that were made at the time, the hardship they put residents through? And that kinda got me back off wanting to settle on what we have and, and continue this a little bit further. So, that's where I'm at.
And I just wanted to mention something real quick. If you take the 5,706, you divide that by 250, if, if the, if the amount was 250, it's 2,030 complaints. If you, because we started at 250, went to 500 and did 750, a little bit of 750. If you did 500 dollars a complaint divided into that 507,000, that would be 1,015 complaints. So, I just thought that was worth noting with some of the comments that were made. I know we're at 5,406. If you divide 250, that automatically brings it down to 2,000. If you did 500, which I don't think the average was 500, but it would bring it down to 1,000 complaints. Councilmember Shepherd.
When it comes to proof, like was mentioned with, we had 5,000 calls and we noted all 5,000 are legit. You know, I don't really care about the 5,000 calls because I'm responsible for District 2 and I represent the people in District 2 and I physically drove around for months and months and months while this problem was going on. And I witnessed thousands of homes not getting their trash picked up, all at the same time. And did the thousands of homes that I witnessed call in? No, because they all knew that what was going on and they were just all like, is our trash ever gonna get picked up? So, to say now, is there proof? Well, there's proof for my district because I was doing my job and I was out there going up and down the streets and I saw the trash wasn't picked up. So, I know it wasn't picked up. And, and I'm sorry, but I'm still insulted. I don't, I don't think we're asking for a great deal amount of money for what our citizens, the impact that our citizens in the city went through. And, and on top of that, we helped, you know? And to sit here and say, oh, can we prove it now? You know, is there evidence? Well, guess what? You know, I'd be glad to testify for the citizens of District 2 because I drove up and down the streets and I saw many streets never touched. And what you're all forgetting, a lot of people are forgetting is, for the months that, that they were having problems and they didn't have the drivers, when they didn't have the drivers, the trucks weren't moving. That means no fuel cost. Ask them what their fuel cost is for the, what do they say they have, 60 trucks? Ask them what the fuel cost savings was when, when three quarters of them, we were told they lost three quarters of their staff. When three quarters of them trucks weren't moving, what was the savings on fuel? Not just the savings on fuel, but the savings on labor cost. You know, so, I'm insulted by the offer. I think we're being extremely reasonable. I don't even agree with the offer that we've made. I, I think we expect more, but I'm willing to accept the offer that the Mayor and Councilman Welsh came up with. But anything less, I think is an insult. And if we're gonna talk about proof, well, I'm a witness. I'm a witness for my district. I drove up and down them streets for months. I got inundated with calls and emails. Not all them people called the special number and not everybody did the report. Some people didn't call at all. They just asked their neighbors, "What's going on? Why isn't our trash being picked up?" A lot of people are too busy with their lives to be bothered with jumping through all these hoops to report their trash not being picked up. Okay? But I know it happened and I knew the homes weren't being picked up. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to first express just my amazement at this process. I can't imagine being on the other side of a negotiating table and having the opportunity to listen to every single council person or someone who was on the other side of tables, arguments for and against and, and them identifying their own weaknesses. And I understand that's, that's the, the restrictions that we're under, but I think it's important to keep that in mind. Having said that, I, I think with regards to the, the number and the figure, Mr. City Manager, these administrative fees that you have listed in the chart that you provided, the 2.16, that's an accumulation of the total fees at each one of the levels that the administrative charges, the 250 that...
That is, that is correct, Councilmember.
Okay. So, if, even if you just did it, uh, which has been done multiple times, just at, at a baseline of 250 across the entire 5,400 some odd, you're looking at about 1.35 million as a baseline. And so, I'm not sure that I could subscribe to the 120 person because that's what's paid out. You know, it's a business that, that they're providing and that they're in. And so, I think there's a contract that both sides entered into willingly. The 250 dollar administrative fee was something that was agreed upon mutually and in fact, that was a minimum that was increased over time to get to this 2.1 figure. So, I think for me, the minimum would be the 1.35 that was agreed upon. As far as the weaknesses go with the verified complaints, I think something that's not being discussed also is the amount of complaints that weren't called into the city, but were in fact called into Waste Pro that they have in their internal systems, which would come out in litigation as part of discovery. So, that number could potentially harm them more than we're aware of because again, we're the only ones that are in a fishbowl with regards to this discussion and, and they're able to do what they do in private. And that's just the way the process works, but I think it's important to be cognizant of that fact.
Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I was happy to hear that Waste Pro came back with, with, you know, additional money, but I think we were pretty clear on what we sent back to them. So, them to just take our offer and cut it in half and think that that's what is gonna be the meeting point in the middle. I think we already cut it more in half by taking it from the 2.5 down to the 7. So, I think we did what we said, which was come to something that we would agree to and then they just halved it again. So, hearing from the city manager that he has not had a chance to sit down with Mr. Jones and from what we talked about last time, is we wanted the city manager to sit down with him one last time. They listened to us and sent a proposal ahead of time. I think it would just still benefit us for the city manager to actually sit and talk with Mr. Jones and express our, let him do the battle for us. So, that's, that's my opinion on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Covston.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I think Mr. City Manager needs to sit down one last time. And I asked you this last time. I'm gonna ask you again, Mr. City Manager, what happens if we do not find an agreement?
That's the million-dollar question. And so, at that point, either Waste Pro has a decision to make or you have a decision to make. However, you have already, you essentially have put place a mechanism to retain the fees or the charges from them. And you have to date withheld 1.6 million dollars from their invoices and you have, as part of this process, created a payment plan by which we would still continue to withhold portions of their submitted invoices, I think for another four months or so. So, if nothing happens, we continue to operate under the guidance that you gave us originally, which is to withhold those fees and based on the 250, 500, 750. And again, if we don't come to a resolution, I think you've already made your decision previously. I, I think, you know, Waste Pro would have to respond. Either they go along with us withholding the fees that we have withheld and will continue to withhold, or they're gonna seek some other mechanism.
They're going to sue us.
That is an op, a, a option that's available to them.
Mm-hmm. So, I just want to make that clear and not tiptoe around that because when we talk about accepting this number or not accepting it, we must remember the alternative. And I am not a fan of going to court over this. I'm not convinced we would...
None of us are.
I'm just, yes. So, I just want to put that out there. I really don't want that to happen. So, I'd love to see us come to a agreement.
It's the integrity of this council that's at stake.
Okay, I, I think we have Councilmember Tate that's going to discuss. And then I think what we'll do, to me, I think the city manager is looking for direction. To me, it's, it's a simple yes or no if we're gonna accept this offer and we'll go down the line and the majority rules. But I will let Councilmember Tate have the floor. the line, and the majority rules, but I will let Councilmember Tate have the floor.
Thank you. I'm kind of like Councilmember Covston. I'm done with this. We need to move on, and we need to move on for our residents and ourselves. We can't keep beating this up. A formal request, a formal letter from this city council through the city manager to Waste Pro to say, this is our offer, but if we say take it or leave it, what are we doing to the residents then? Because suppose we are being sued, does the service continue? What are we going to do then? That is my concern. You know, every time we talk trash, I ask the same thing. Bulk trash, still not working. The city manager told me that Waste Pro has agreed that they'll do all the pickups on one day. Do we wait until we settle all this to get bulk pickup going? Or can we work on that in the meantime? Because bulk pickup is still a big problem, and move-outs are still a big problem. So while we're trying to negotiate this money, we've got more problems on the table. So my vote is yes, but my patience is ready to say, we need to fix this for our residents and come to some sort of an agreement. So I guess my final question is, does it take a formal vote of this council to say we need a drop-dead date? Either yes or no?
I don't, if I may answer.
Yes, sir.
I don't believe we need a formal vote of council. I think we need a consensus, because you've already authorized me to negotiate, and that's part of the negotiation process. So again, I'm just trying to get direction from you, and if the consensus of council is, this is it, we're tired of going back and forth, we give them our last and final offer, and then they have to respond accordingly. If I may just respond to a couple of points that you made, Councilmember. So the way I understand the contract, and I'm not playing a lawyer here, just want to be clear, but the way I understand the contract is, in the event of a dispute such as this, Waste Pro is still obligated to provide the service while we work the dispute. So I'm comfortable that, based on the strength of the contract, that Waste Pro will not abandon their responsibilities under the contract, because that creates bigger problems for them and us. I want to state for the record, and I think I have to at this point, is along the lines of what Councilmember Shepherd was saying, that he visibly witnessed the missed pickups in his district. I can tell you that staff, now, I can't say for sure that, you know, Rob Hernandez went to One, Two, Three Main Street and observed it, but I can tell you that I drove the city numerous times. This was a citywide problem.
Yes.
So I just want to put that on the record. This was a citywide problem, not just confined in District Two. We've all seen it, we've all witnessed it. And I also want to say, even though that we have five thousand four hundred and six vetted, unduplicated, registered complaints with the city, I want to point out that we were overwhelmed with the number of calls that came into the city's three-one-one center, and the actual call volume was significantly higher than that. We had a lot of missed and dropped calls because of the call volume. The five thousand four hundred and six were the calls that we were actually able to get to. So I put that in perspective, that the problem was much larger than the five thousand four hundred and six, and it was a citywide problem.
Mr. Mayor, just to finish that, I agree that, I mean, I drive the city all day because I'm in real estate, so yes, we see it, it was a citywide problem. I could verify it. And remember, each one of us, I'm sure up here, got emails that we didn't go, I didn't go through three-one-one, I went through Rob and through Mr. Jones. And so whether that was right or wrong, but as we were getting hundreds and hundreds of emails...
And in turn, we sent those to three-one-one.
Right. And so I have copies of those emails, so those are verifiable, and anything that was in my district, I drove. So I don't think that that's the point. I think that, I mean, I'm glad you put that on the record there, but I think the bigger issue is, we just need to move forward.
And I just need to also respond to two other points. Waste Pro has exhibited a willingness to address the trash pickup problem. I don't want to say that they have agreed to date, Mr. Jones was going to go back and look at what he needed to do operationally, but he expressed a willingness. He understands that this system is just not working.
You're talking about the bulk trash?
The bulk trash.
Okay.
And the yard waste.
Okay.
And it's not just Waste Pro's fault, because I will tell you, I have been frustrated this week, just on the block where I'm staying, that people are putting out their bulk items and their yard waste whenever they want.
Exactly.
And code enforcement has had to go out there. It's a problem citywide. I spoke last night at a neighborhood association, the issue came up with a new homeowner wanting to know why people just seem to put things out on the curbside whenever they want. So public education continues to be a problem. I think the confusion over, do I put it out on trash day? Do I put it out whenever I want? That continues to be there. The only way we're going to fix this, I think, is going to same-day pickup, as has been suggested by members of city council, and then adopting a zero-tolerance policy from that point forward, and issuing tickets and citations on the spot, rather than going through the full-blown code enforcement process that requires a thirty-day notice and appearance before a special magistrate. I firmly believe that's the only way we're going to be able to fix this. I think the problem is, it's a cultural and endemic problem to Cape Coral, because this has gone on, not for five years, not for ten years, but longer than that.
So you're saying that until we negotiate this financial situation, that we can't go ahead and change the bulk trash?
No, I'm not suggesting that at all. In fact, we've...
Somebody, can somebody answer that?
Yeah, we've had the parallel conversations with Mr. Jones, and in fact, the last negotiation session we had, we probably spent more time talking about this and less on the actual monetary settlement. And so, and again, and I'm not speaking on behalf of Waste Pro, but Waste Pro did indicate a willingness to do something different.
Yeah, I'd like to get that process started.
Well, it's already started.
Yeah.
It's already started.
And I think we also have to be aware that, to me, these are two totally different issues.
They are. They are, definitely.
And we should address them that way.
That's why I'm wondering, can you go ahead?
And having this dialogue in the middle of trying to decide what that monetary value's going to be, to me, that's a whole different discussion.
That is.
And I agree that we have some room of improvements regarding our bulk trash, but I think we're here today, basically, for one answer that the city manager is looking for. Waste Pro has offered four hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and four cents. That will be a given to the city in a fifty-nine thousand in kind for a total of five oh seven six forty-four and four cents. So I think what we need to do is go down the line. It's a yes or no. It's pretty simple. You either agree or you don't with that amount, and the majority rules. So wherever we fall on that, then we give the city manager the direction he's looking for.
Just wanted to be clear that they offered the five oh seven, six forty-four, in addition to the making this whole on our costs and the withheld franchise fee.
Right. But we set that to the side, I thought. Okay. All right. We'll start with Councilmember Long and go down the list.
I wouldn't agree with the offered settlement as it exists.
What do we say?
Nope.
No?
No.
No.
Okay, I think that gives a direction you're looking for, Mr. City Manager.
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to item five, is roundtable discussion. I don't see anything listed as council have any other items they want to discuss.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on the town hall meeting last night.
Yes, ma'am.
FEMA, I did send you all a map from FEMA. We had a hundred and twenty people, it was very well-attended. People were satisfied with the information that we gave. We had a lot of questions, a lot of good speakers and good information. I sent you all updates, and I will continue to do them as I find them and discover more.
And thank you for all your diligent and hard work, because I know you've been putting a lot of time and effort in this.
It looks like we're going to end up going to Washington, so we're going to need that.
Okay. Time and place of future...
January, yeah.
Yeah.
Till I get food trucks.
Time and place of future meetings, we have a regular meeting.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. I was waiting for the staff report. So I just had a quick note with regards to next week's meeting on the twentieth. I had a, prior to my appointment, something on my agenda that I need to tend to, and I will be about an hour late to that meeting next week. So just wanted to note that for the record.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else? Okay, see, and none time, place of future meetings, we have a regular meeting in the Cape Coral City Council, scheduled for Wednesday, October twentieth, at four thirty p.m., here in Council Chambers. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.